Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Barney Arnold. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, November 15th. And I see that Nathan is with us remotely, so we already had a quorum. But anyway, we have four or five of us, and I'm sure David will be along shortly. So the agenda tonight is going to include the usual committee input, and then we're going to open the annual town meeting warrant with a motion there. And we're pleased to have Chief Soros here to talk with us about the fire department. And then Brian McDonald will be taking us through the tax classification hearing. We'll have a discussion about the emergency management planning committee, as well as appointing a new emergency manager. The next item is the police chief search, and we have a number of pieces to that. Then we're very happy to have the municipal facilities committee, or a portion of them, joining us tonight to review their charter and to talk about their goals and budget. We have a discussion about the two different dog concerns that have been brought forward. The town administrators' report, we have one appointment, and then liaison reports, and we will conclude with reviewing and approving the minutes and hoping to adjourn by 9:50. So with that, I would like to invite anyone who is on the call, or I assume you and Chief Soros adhere for your parts on the agenda, not for community input. Okay. So is there anyone else on the call? I can't see the number of participants on the bottom there.
Well, 11.
Oh, there they are, out to the right. All right. Anyone there wishing to make a comment or statement during community input? All right. Well, hearing none, or seeing none, let's proceed then. And for the Select Board members, we do have a motion in our packet. We decided earlier to open up, in a previous Select Board meeting, to open up the warrant for the annual town meeting. Our town meeting is scheduled for early May next year, and so we're opening up the warrant a little earlier this year, and I would love to have a motion.
I move that the Select Board vote to open May 8th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for Submission of Articles and to close the warrant on February 28th, 2023.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. I don't recall in the past as having a closing date. Is that new? Does this actually open and close at this motion?
With this motion, yeah. We had talked about this, I mean, at previous meetings, but do you have a concern about that, Nathan, or just a question?
Well, I just think historically, there have been times when we've decided not to close the warrant because something was close. What would we do if that was the situation?
Yeah, I think I know the answer. We would just vote to end the warrant. Couldn't we do that as a Select Board?
Yeah, the date's more for the organization of the document, because they do need legal review, and you have to consider them. You can open it again.
Yeah.
It's submitted as long as it's not published.
Yeah, it's also a way of letting people know the drop dead date.
Right, right.
If possible.
Yeah. And I will just say, in case anyone who's listening has a question about this, I did also get a question from the Conservation Commission earlier, that the, these, you know, you can submit a warrant proposal and have it fleshed out enough that you can provide it to the Select Board by February 28th, and then there is some time there to sort of further define the wording and clarify, and go through the process of determining what the exact motion is going to be. All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so let's move on to...
We got a vote.
Yeah, we haven't voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Yes, so let's do a roll call vote, please, on the motion. All those in favor?
No, roll call.
Right, what am I saying? Sorry about that. Okay. Let me step back.
That's okay.
Yeah, all right. Roll call vote on the motion. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
Mudd, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Excellent. So the warrant is now open. So for the fire department, this conversation, Brian, Soros, our chief here, would you like to come up and join us? There's an extra mic there.
Green light is on.
Green light is on.
And then if you, if everyone that's got a packet there, if you go to page four of your packet, that's where Chief Soros has provided us with some information about the status of the fire department and some financial needs he sees down the road. Anyway, welcome, and thank you for joining us. And Travis, did you want to, as the liaison to the fire department?
Yes, I wanted to say just one thing.
Sure.
And I wanted to comment on the chief's mustache, and he can tell you about that.
Uh-huh, okay.
I apologize in advance. I'm not a mustache guy. It's No Shave November. Police Department are doing Cops for Kids with Cancer, I think, the fundraiser, and a number of people in our department wanted to organize us to do, to join in with them. And we did, and I went to the last training, and I guess I was one of the few that had a mustache.
Oh, really?
Anyway. I tried to, you could squirt and keep it on for the rest of the month, but...
Yeah. Hey, I thought you were looking rather, you know...
There you go, I'm sure.
Swab. Okay, anyway, thank you, chief. Yeah, so please tell us about what's going on with the fire department and some of your goals and challenges.
Yeah, so a lot of what, you know, we've been working on is bringing in new people and all this kind of thing, but also succession, making sure we have what we need going forward. And we knew when I became chief, this was going to be a big, one of the big challenges is both of those needs. In terms of that, we've done a lot of development of our senior staff. Our deputy, as some of you may or may not know, is a paramedic and lieutenant in a neighboring town, but he also, so he also recently got his Master's degree in Public Administration for the fire service. So very much, you know, qualified for the position we have him in at this point. And he's doing a great job there. And he's on the, on the middle of his career, so he's also, that's, that's good. Captain Coning is somewhat older. He's been out of service because of medical issues, so, but what we have with him, we have a, somebody who's a mechanical engineer, who's been doing incredible work on an individual basis with a lot of the equipment, and he's, we're getting him trained so that he could, at any point, if Rob decides to move on, pick up that role of maintaining all of our vehicles and doing that. Our EMS coordinator has probably wanted to retire for a number of years now. He thinks it's, things are in good enough shape that he can. So he, that's Bert Rubenstein, and he's targeting end of this year. And so we have our lieutenant, David Newman, is picking that up and may pick up other roles. So Bert has just done an incredible job for this town. I, people don't know, he's, he's done, often in the background, often without everybody noticing, but he will continue as an EMT and continuing to fill in places where we need him, but the day in and day out, being in charge of EMS, he will turn over. One of the other things he's done for the department is done a lot of the IT and programming of our custom software. Our code prevention officer is also aged out of being a firefighter. He was a retired firefighter from Concord. He's continuing to do that job, but we're also getting people in position for when he decides to retire. So David Newman, in addition to the EMS, has also become a code enforcement, he has all his credentials for doing that, and is kind of in a soft way picking, learning that what happens in this town with that position and being able to pick it up whenever Tony decides that he's done. So like I say, we've kind of done a lot with the people we have and look at the positions we have. One of the things that we'll have to, that I may, I may try to talk to you guys about or FinCom about is, I don't really want to make another full-time position at this point, but there will probably come a time when David Newman, and it may be this year, sometime during this fiscal year, this next fiscal year, David Newman may be doing enough hours of work that the town ought to be providing him some form of benefits, and we should be ready for that. But I don't, like I say, I'd like the positions to be separate, that they could be, to go to people who want them, and not to say, we're going to make a new, another full-time position at this point. But, but just the benefit side is something that I'm bringing up. One of the things, we haven't had a second lieutenant for three years. One of the things I've begun doing is taking, it took John Bernarden and making him the acting lieutenant. It's very good for firefighters to have experience doing that kind of leadership. One of the things that in our, in any department like ours happens is if there is no other officer available, the senior firefighter becomes the officer, and they're put in that position of leadership and whatever, but it's the worst time to do it, because there's nobody else around to help them. And so this way, we get them in, we get them that experience doing it, and he may continue, we may, he may go full, get, we may make him a full lieutenant, or after a year or some period of time, we might just roll another firefighter into that role for a period of time, and all, it's really good to have that experience and to have that within our force. We've had people who've had been officers before and then rolled back to the firefighter role, and it's, you know, it's just wonderful to have that person in the right seat of the truck, who can, you know, can command that, that group, even if somebody's an overall commander. So even if you need an interior commander, you need a command for a division, having those people. So we're, it's something we're starting to do, starting to give these other people some of that experience. One of the things we do in our department, kind of interesting, is generally speaking, the least senior person, the least senior officer will be in command. And so if it's another junior person, and I'm also on the call, I will usually not be in a junior role if they need me on there, but it gives them the ability to pick up those, the experience of being in charge, and I don't try to, you know, take that away or the other more, more senior officers, but that way, these, these people are getting experiences as they go along. So that's kind of what's happening on the, on the leadership side. On the staffing side, on the, for EMS, we currently have six people who are certified as EMTs, but we are not yet calling them EMTs in our department. They're going on calls, where they're getting used to things so that they're comfortable and more comfortable for them being in the leadership role in terms of that. So that's, they're progressing their way up, but now we also have another five EMTs who are in an EMT class. And this EMT class, we kind of helped sponsor. We did one three years ago, just when I first became chief. I worked on getting one physically here in this, well, actually, it was usually in the cafeteria of the school. We now have what we, one of the best instructors in the area, and he's been, generally, the classes has been in the mull, but anytime he does anything practical, he's been actually coming here. So the class is more than just our five people, but they've been using our, our equipment and use our station, which is very good for our people, not all of the people in it. So two of the people who are in it are not currently members of our fire department, and it gets them brought in, looks like they will both become members of our department, but also they're practicing in our stuff with our things and everything, and it's, it's been a good experience to do that. Like I say, the classes themselves have been a little bit, we've been doing the stuff here. It's also nice for them to go through as a group and to go through and, we've been working with that instructor and saying, this is the kinds of things we need. So he's doing above and beyond what just gets you through the test. So that's, that's been a good experience. On the fire staffing, one of our firefighters, Stephen Frey, just graduated from Fire Academy with his firefighter 1-2 certification. So this is the same certification any of the career firefighters around here would, would get to begin their career. Over half of our people have it. At one time, we were more closer to two-thirds, we may be closer to half right now. We have two more members that are starting to, that are, will be doing that in the spring. We have several new firefighters. When you start, we train you and have kind of a high bar of your ability to use our SCBA before we can put you, you know, in a building, put you in the calls. So we have several people in that thing. So like I say, we have kind of an onboarding process that we're going through with a lot of those people. And we have two people that we're training to be drivers, pump operators. We will need to continue to do that. So our staffing, you know, there's two ways to look at our staffing. One is to look at our board, where people are committed to be there, and if you look at their, in our weekday mornings, we're low, we just are. If you look at how often we've had to call mutual aid, we just don't. So we, one way or another, we cover our calls at this point, but it's why we're continuing to hire and train and all those kinds of things. So since I've been chief, I think one, one call that I know of, we've called mutual aid because of staffing. But, you know, other towns call mutual aid all the time because they don't have flexible staffing. We kind of consider that, if we need more people, we just call more people, and more people come, and in general, that has worked. We'll do multiple calls at a time, you know, we'll do whatever, but, but it is something we watch, and our, and like I say, our availability is low, and we need to be continuing to recruit people, especially for daytime hours. Yeah, so, you know, one of your questions had to do with contributions through master plan goals, and I think there are a number of ways in which we, we do that. There's the culture of Carlisle that we want to preserve, and I think fire department really does that. Financial sustainability, you know, obviously, that's why we're trying to continue to do what we do. Just things that I wanted to call out that may come up whenever we talk to the FinCom and other things in terms of trends that are going on. So we, at one time, the fire department and all departments kind of, were putting rather routine things in capital requests. You know, we put tires in, and we put, we need a new computer, and we need, you know, those kinds of things. We've kind of taken that and rolled it back into our budget, and it means we've kind of tried to do more with less, but those things, putting them in capital requests doesn't seem like the right place for them, anyway. And so, so we have absorbed these things into, into the budget we had, and that's worked well. The thing that may happen this year, next year, I don't, I don't know when it, when things will come to a head, but our budget being so light on personnel and heavy on things, you know, when electricity costs, fuel costs, and parts costs, and maintaining, you know, we take something out to be maintained costs, all, and buying new gear costs, all of those, the inflationary value, inflation has really hit those things hard. So we will do what we can to contain costs as much as we can, but it is just something that should be understood that we're a department that will have a harder time containing inflation than some of the other departments, because we're just so heavy on equipment and maintain, maintaining things, et cetera. One of the things we may do a request for is for hose. So two, three years ago, actually, we, I tested a lot of our hose, and the supply hose, we identified where we needed to replace, and we did that. I took, I just fit that within our budget. I'd made some good deals, and we got stuff. This last year, we had, or this summer, we just had a professional team come out to test it. We're supposed to test every year at this point with OSHA, the OSHA rules that came in effect, and they saw our hose that was made before 1987 and said, this is just, you know, not acceptable. And it's true. You look at NFPA, it says, you shall, you shall replace all of your hose made before 87. The deal with that hose is that it wasn't made to a standard where when it fails and it doesn't leak, it blows up. And when they tested it, we did, what, we, it happened to a couple of them. They went ahead and tested it, we got rid of the stuff that failed, but we do have, still have a significant amount of hose, and so I will probably, it, it's hard because that those kinds of purchases, you kind of wait to the end of the year to do, but right now, it takes a year, a year and a half to get the stuff, and so it's just, it's kind of a mess. So I'm going to make a capital request for hose, where I have three years then to get it.
Yeah, I'm just curious of the magnitude of that, just in general size.
So a lot of it, it's a moving target because of the cost of hose, but it's in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. I already put an order in for stuff that we just absolutely needed, and that was $4,500 for twelve length hose. We're kind of, our special sauce has always been the supply hose, right? So that's something we do, other people don't. We have all this massive amounts of supply hose, and we kind of, oh, yeah, I know we put fires out, but now we need to worry about, oh, yeah, we put fires out and actually pay attention to that hose and get it up to the current standards.
Is the reason we have so much hose because we have sort of long driveways and, yeah?
Yeah, long driveways. The other thing is that kind of all of our trucks are made to do structural firefighting. So if, you know, what other people would call a brush truck, for us with a 2,000-foot driveway, if it's snowing, that's what's going to show up at your house, or at a house with a long driveway. And, you know, we see that on our run card, and we say, oh, you know, to get our big truck halfway up the driveway and stuck, you know, it's going to be horrible. Let's take what we call our brush truck, and it's, and it's set up to do structural firefighting with all the hose you would do and everything to do that, but because that's what we're going to take in those, those conditions, and it's also backup. So we have more trucks than a lot of people do, and each of them is, is set up to do that kind of thing. You know, our ladder truck can do structural firefighting, et cetera. So, and I think, you know, obviously, what makes what we do work is the dedication of the people in our department, and it's a lot. I just happened to pull out the availability numbers, I threw them at the bottom of that document, as a, just a, an understanding, if you think about people, you know, if they work 40 hours a week for four weeks, you know, they're doing 160 hours. Well, we have people, two people doing over 500 hours a month.
Wow.
Right?
And they...
Five people doing 400 to 500, five people doing 300 to 400, and this was just, I just chose the last month, previous month.
That means they're available.
Huh? They're being available.
Those are 29. How many are on the force?
Close to 40.
Yeah, yeah. There must be others that aren't captured.
Right. And so we have, we have some people you know are in town, but they're not, they haven't given us that, that...
That they're available.
And, and sometimes that comes and goes. We'll, we'll...
And the, the, your comment earlier about weekday mornings being light, so these are, do these numbers reflect people that have other jobs?
Many of them do.
Yeah, and so they're not available necessarily on a weekday morning, yeah.
I wanted to ask you, I think I, there's, I don't know, I have general concern about when you say that there, you know, there may not be enough staffing at the time, but then you make the call, and all of a sudden, they're not on the light board, but they come in and you, you have always, except for that one exception you mentioned, but you've always been able to staff. Has that always been the case since you've been associated with the fire department? Is that an ongoing problem or challenge that you've dealt with, or is that new phenomenon?
Statistically, we're in a worse shape than we were before. Not in terms of mutual aid. We use probably less mutual aid than we used to use, but in terms of people setting themselves as being available, and we know we can commit to them coming at this time right now, we're, we're worse off than we were for certain things. So for officers, we're much better, and that's the thing, is often we can use an officer to fill in a position for somebody else, but for, say, trained firefighter pump operators, we're in worse shape.
Mind if I keep asking?
No, go right ahead.
So I, I've talked to you about this a little bit, but I said, to think about longer term, like, how do you not only solve that problem, but then think out 10 years or so? You know, what are the big challenges, and is this model sustainable? And, you know, you're...
Well, I think we know what to do if it's not, right? So then we hire some full-time people to be around. The problem with that is it kind of goes in one direction, and it's, it's combination fire departments, it's a hard thing to do right and to get it to continue that way. But that's a, that's a model, and that's a model we could do. Is this sustainable? What, one of the things that if you look at our demographics in this town, so in 2000, 2010 era, we had, you know, grouped this size of people between the age of, you know, 30 and 45, and then you went down to 2020, and it went, a very small number of people in the sound between the age of 30 and 45, very, very, very small.
That were on the, just demographically, the entire population, okay.
And so the people you're going to bring in got tiny, and what's happened, and so, yeah, we got kind of scared, and that was when I became chief. I said, look, we had a challenge, and that's why I'm doing this. But you look at what happened after COVID, and all of a sudden, that, we got a big influx of people with kids. So I have people coming to me, we're hiring people. Now, it takes time to get them to the point of, you know, it takes years to get them to be good pump operators. So we're working them back up again, but, so that's, that's what gives me hope, is that our demographic that we're going to pull from is actually opened back up again more than it was.
Is there a metric, though, that we should look at as the Select Board or the, you know, the town administration, to know when you get to a point where you don't have, you know, where we can see those trends and say, you know, we think that there's a problem, and then have to start acting on it?
I'm not sure what you can do to act on it. I think, I mean, that's what I, that's my job, that's what I'm trying to do, but what most departments would say is if over 20% of your calls are mutual, are provided by mutual aid, that's when you've got a problem, and that's what our career departments look at, and they say, okay, we need to hire more staff if we have over 20% of our calls are provided by mutual aid. We're a department that has very seldom used mutual aid, because we kind of consider we have infinite staffing, and usually are...
Good metric.
Been there, but that's, that's kind of the metric that probably is the real metric. Nobody else really does, there are very few departments that do what we do in terms of tracking who's available right this minute 24 hours a day. That's the unique thing that we do. Many departments either make a call out and see who shows up, and if nobody shows up, they call mutual aid, or the other thing that they do is call, have a system where they make a call out and people on their phone say, I'm, I'm going right now, and then say, oh, I see there's three people, there's not people to call for this call, I won't go, or I will go. So it's, there are a number of commercial applications to do that. There are very few people that do what we do, which is, you've committed, if there's a call right now, you would call. And it's something that we, like I say, we can track.
But you're not even close to the 20% metric.
Brian, I have a question for you. So you talked about, if I, if I heard it right, that... that you have had two full-time positions, yours and the one that Burke was filling? No. Let me guess. Just yours. Okay. And I thought you said at some point.
So that, that what's happened is I would like, there's one person who's now willing to pick up a couple of the positions we need to
Right. Phil. Yeah.
And at some point he's going to hit over 20 hours a week.
Okay.
And almost certainly. And at that point, we can, you know, whistle and whatever, or we can do what's right and, and
Got it. Make it.
He probably will not use many of the benefits.
Yeah.
But.
He would be eligible. He should be off. And this is.
The town should be covered. That's the right thing for the town to do is to
Right.
To do that rather than be forced into it.
So this is Lieutenant Newman you're talking about. And so do you, again, I apologize for my, you know, lack of familiarity with the current setup, but, so the idea would be you'd have another, you know, another somebody at a, at a emboss, full-time leadership role? If, if, if it gets to that.
Right. So if he's doing code prevention and EMS coordinator and lieutenant, you know, and, you know, some other things for me, then he's.
Yeah.
You're getting pretty close to full-time.
Second in command.
But if you make it a full-time position, then you kind of get locked into that. Whereas if he's doing that and he says, you know what, code prevention, we have this police officer who really wants to do this, who's on our department and, okay. And then it's easier to, to be flexible about how you handle that. So, I mean, we could make it a full-time position if that's what we want to do, but
You don't seem to need.
I think it's better for the department and the town if he's willing to do this on a hourly basis and a piecemeal basis to, to continue to do that until we see that we'd, we'd rather consolidate.
Okay.
If I may, just, just to clarify, you know, Barney, you were asking if he's second in command. I don't think he's second in command. I think that's Matt.
Oh, okay. So that, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And, and what his job would be is not coverage. It would not be going on calls. It would be all this, this administrative stuff that is done by.
That's above and beyond.
Right. So it's teaching the EMTs, teaching EMT classes. It's, it's, you know, on the Wednesday nights, it's, you know, et cetera. Doing code inspections.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, and we have to break for a hearing, but let me ask you, I want to ask you a couple factual questions just so I understand. And then I want to ask you a broader question. So.
Yeah.
Like approximately how many hours of training does a basic firefighter need to be for that person? You're confident that they can go on a call?
Somewhere in the order of 15.
Okay, so not a huge.
No. So like I say, many departments would say you need to be firefighter one, two certified or some do. We don't do that. We say you need to be very competent in using your breathing apparatus. And then you start going on, whatever. But we, once you do that, you will go on calls. We might, you know, we, we not, might not throw you on the engine if we knew it was a structure fire.
Right.
But if we're doing a alarm investigation and it happens to be a structure fire.
You're there.
You're there. And you know how to use your gear.
And to be, to put your, be on the light board, you have to be in town or how many minutes away or what's the rule?
Like, probably seven minutes away, but we'd like it to be more like four.
Right. So really somebody who has a job that requires them to be somewhere else, even if they're flexible, couldn't really work, right? During that time period.
During that time period. Right.
And then the rest of the time, I mean, so do you have an expectation of an individual like that they will, so, you know, again, you talked, you talked about young parents basically, right? So like Ryan here, right? You know, he, he's got ukulele lessons and soccer and hockey and reserve training and, you know, he's got a lot going on, right? But if he wanted to be a firefighter, if he lived in town, he wanted to be a firefighter, what would your expectations of how he would prioritize that availability?
We, we kind of, one of the things we've done has been a little bit more flexible with that. Our goal has always been 152 hours a month.
152?
Yeah.
It's kind of the minimum.
It's kind of, well, that's, that's what we are aiming for.
That's what you're aiming for.
And what we've done with that is instead of saying, we'll cut you out if you don't, it's that we won't give you your stipend. So.
Right. But you would pay them when they are on call. Just not a.
Yes. If you go on, if you go on a call, that's great, but we, there's a stipend that we give you for availability. And if you don't have availability, we don't give you that stipend.
Right.
So just because you're a regular firefighter, doesn't mean you're going to get your stipend.
Okay.
Regular firefighter and you give us 152 hours a month, then, then you get that stipend. And so that's kind of the way we've, we've handled that. And what we've done is taken on people who are very busy and, you know, the first year they do training with us, it's great if they go on calls with us. They're not as useful as they're going to be after, you know, year two. And then they, the kids get a little bit older and whatever, and they start giving us more time. And, and the sweet spot for us is somebody who trains when they're that young. And as the kids get into high school and stuff, all of a sudden they start giving us a fair amount of time. And a lot of them, this is something that is, feels very rewarding to them. And their regular job is, is great, but they're going to be a little more flexible with that. And, and all that's kind of a certain percentage of people, right? Get a lot of it.
I think that's smart. So do the stipends on the wages you pay for on call, are they going with the town inflation rate? Or are you adjusting?
So, yes. So the, some of the things, there are a couple of things that weren't on call and now are. One of the things we do that is kind of unique and smart is our stipends do follow.
Okay.
And a lot of towns get really stuck because they don't do that. And so all of a sudden they realize, you know, they're paying $100 a year stipend for somebody and, you know, it's just, it's silliness. And whereas what we've done is followed inflation with that.
So you have about 40, something like 40? And given the bell curve you kind of outlined here and the idea that you're more flexible, like what's a good number where you'd feel kind of comfortable, like you had enough of the starter people and enough of the people that have.
So basically, all the time, if we don't have enough EMTs, we get really worried. On the fireside, we're a little bit more flexible, but you'd want, it'd be really good to have 25 people who are in the game.
Solid. Like 150.
Both EMTs who are. Yeah, that would include both.
And is, is 62 few EMTs?
Oh, no. We have, we have like 20 EMTs.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah. But we're, we're bringing, we're sweating 11 more people on in the next period of time. They're, we're working them in. We, we brought a whole lot of people in and a lot of them have been younger and a lot of them we're just not going to have for a long period of time. Either they're young and they want to buy a house and they're going to be in towns and they're not going to be here. Some of them, we brought a lot of pre-meds and, and students on, pre-med nursing students, et cetera. And some of them we still have, but then we have them, you know, in the summer, we have them other, other times. And that's, you know, a lot of our regular people, you know, have a summer place. They have other things in their lives and they can go away for a month. They can go away for a week. And having these students come in in the summer and pick it up, it's, is a wonderful thing. So, but, but that means we kind of are constantly bringing people in, training them. It's, we've become much more of a training institution than we.
Right. But that seems to be, that's, to me, it seems to be that's the model you're in now.
Exactly.
If you're going to maintain an on-call department. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
David, we should.
Yeah, because you're.
Yeah.
We advertised it for 7:30.
I'm good. No, I'm good. Excellent.
Yeah. Yeah. I know. Our agenda didn't follow exactly.
No, that's.
Yeah. But anyway, Chief Saurus, really appreciate you coming in and talking with us and sharing where you are.
For the discussion of LPC, et cetera.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And thanks to everybody in your department that's making this work. Yeah. All right. So I believe Brian, I saw Brian earlier, Brian McDonald on the, on the Zoom call and I think, yeah, Ken, Ken Mustello is here as the board chair for the Board of Assessors. So welcome. Do you want to join us by coming up to a mic? I'm not sure how you and Brian want to do this.
Brian is going to do nearly all of the presenting.
Okay.
Here for some questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
And then Brian, do you have something you want to, I know we have in our packet, the extensive materials you provide. Are you going to share something on the screen?
I most certainly will be.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Well, you.
Yeah, you're a little faint.
At the end of the tube.
I will do my best. How about the, how, how about now?
It's still pretty soft.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can.
We can hear you. We'll be quiet.
Yeah. Now, first, before we do this, do we, I think we should have your presentation and then we can do the motion, right? We have, we do have a motion. Okay. Why don't you go ahead though, Brian, with the presentation and then we'll come back to the motion. Thanks.
As, as we proceed, it will require that the board make a motion after each option or as it would affect the ability of, it would affect other, it would affect other things further down the road with regards to the presentation and the classification hearing. So what would require you to make a motion as we, as we proceed. There are four different options that will be presented this evening. So it would require a motion and a vote after the, each different option is presented.
So the, yeah, this, the motion we have is all lumped into one, but you're suggesting that after you do the first part of the presentation, we'll pause and then you'll guide us to what the motion should be. Okay. Thank you.
The board, yeah, the, the presentation does include a recommendation by the Board of Assessors on how the select board should act on each different classification option. Okay? All right. So for those that don't know me, my name is Brian McDonald. I am the principal assessor here for the town of Carlisle. And on behalf of the Carlisle Board of Assessors, which includes Ken Mustello, David Boardman and Karen Yeneman, welcome to the fiscal 2003 classification hearing. All right. So this evening, I will present, I will present four different options for the Carlisle Select Board with the necessary information to conduct a public hearing and information session on the classification options available under Massachusetts general law. Classification hearing allows the board to consider several options that allow for the shift of the tax burden both between and within the residential and the commercial industrial personal property classes. The four different options that will be presented this evening will include the selection of a minimum residential factor, the selection of an open space discount, the granting of a residential exemption, and finally, the granting of a small commercial exemption. So first, I'd like to begin with the, the tax rate. How did we get here? And the first thing that should be presented, or I'd like to present, is the establishment of the tax levy. That begins with the levy limit. That begins with the previous year's fiscal 2022 levy limit. Then there's an additional two and a half percent increase as, you know, as dictated by Proposition 2 and a half, followed by new fiscal 2023 new growth number of 520,146 this year. Include previous debt exclusions. That results in the maximum allowable levy of $33,185,031. Total amount to be raised will begin second as the fiscal year budget and levy calculation. So we begin with the amount to be raised, which is established by a vote of town meeting, followed by the estimated receipts and revenues. Subtract that from the amount to be raised and that results in a local tax levy of $29,843,058. The difference, what is excess levy capacity? That is the difference between the amount of local taxes that could be raised and the amount of taxes that will be raised just for classification. And we move into the calculation of a single tax rate. So what you see in the table in front of you is the total valuation by property class. You can see the residential property class is, makes up 98.18% of the total valuation of the entire community. So the establishment of, determine what the single tax rate is. You take that previous number that we determined on the previous slide of $29,843,059, divide that by the total value, valuation of the community, multiply by a thousand. And that's how we come up with the single tax rate of $14.15 per $1,000 in assessed value. So before we continue on to the rest of the presentation, I just want to bring some important information to, to the select board and to the rest of the participants here this evening. And that's, having just been hired this year, I, I felt it was imperative that, that this information be included as part of the presentation to understand the valuation increases that were forthcoming for fiscal 2023, which is one of the reasons that the tax rate fell so significantly from $16.50 in fiscal 2022 to the single tax rate of $14.15 for fiscal 2023. Well, a couple of things I'd like to point out here is, you know, for fiscal 2023, I, evaluations are predicated on real estate transactions that occurred during calendar year 2021. So we're using historical sales in order to establish valuation. COVID-19 pandemic led to the suppression of all real estate sales in early 2020. As you recall, all sales transaction, transactions essentially came to a halt in, right at the end of February of 2020. So that led to a rapid change in demand as part of the, and hence led to the rapid appreciation of residential property values here in Carlisle. So a couple of statistics I wanted to point out here is, so the change between 2020 and 21, so you see a decrease in the total days on market. I think everybody can remember how, how marketing times properties would come on and come off as, with increased, with decreased amount of days on market. It really was amazing to see the, the decrease, not just here, but across Massachusetts as well. So you see significant increase in the list price, but as you can see, that went from 1.1 million 95,000 up from 949,500. But the important part here that, what I want to point out is even with that increase in the median list price from 20 to 21, the, the percentage of the, the list to sales ratio, which, you know, measures the, the percentage of the property selling at or above its list price, it was selling at 105%, which means even with that 145,500 increase, the median sale price went up and above that median list price to 1.3 million even. So an increase of $378,750 from the previous year. So you can see that this is really trying to provide a picture as to how, how rapid the increase was during 2021 from 2020. So you can see the average single family value for fiscal 2023 is now $1,125,829. That is up 20.32% from the previous fiscal year. Moving on now to the selection of a minimum residential factor. So what we have here in front of you is the classification options table. These are the different op, what this does is summarizes information for the select board to understand the different factors in the corresponding CIP shifts and the effects that it would have both on the tax rate or tax rates as well as to the average single family tax bill and to the average commercial industrial tax bill. So a single tax rate, if the select board were to. So a single tax rate, if the Select Board were to, to adopt a residential factor of one and a CIP shift of one, that would result in a single tax rate of $14.15. That would result in an average single family tax bill of $15,930 and an average commercial industrial, commercial industrial tax bill of $9,543. You, the Select Board does have the option to shift up to a C, or to adopt a CIP shift of 150 and, or a residential factor of 0.9907. That would result in the drop of the residential open space tax rate to $14.02 and increase the commercial industrial personal property tax rate to $21.23. However, a maximum CIP shift of 150 would only provide $147 in savings to the average single family tax bill. The reason for that is you see that the, even with the max shift of 150, the total percentage of the levy borne by the residential open space class would decrease by less than 1%, which is why you see a less than 1% drop in the average single family tax bill. With that said, the Board of Assessors, the Board of Assessors recommends a residential factor of one. It would create a single tax rate for all property classes as a maximum CIP shift would result in minimal tax savings for the average single family property. Are there any questions?
I have one unrelated question if I could.
Yes.
Would, would it completely throw you off to, to put this in presentation mode and get rid of the next slide thing? It's very hard to read.
Oh, I have to apologize. I can, are you, I have to apologize. Just a moment. Um, just a moment. That one? No. Hold on. I do have to apologize here.
I was funneling it online.
Oh, on yours, yeah.
But that would help, probably.
Anybody, let's see.
There you go. Yeah. Well, but if he can go to present, I still can't read it very easily.
Well, but it's in the packet. It's not in the exact same form, but it's generally in the packet.
Is this, is this, is this better now?
It's beautiful, but we've, we've gone to Colorado or somewhere.
Yes.
Actually, it might be just upstate New Hampshire. Yeah.
Hold on just a moment.
Ah, there it is.
That's better, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I do apologize.
Okay. Did you, did you want them, the motion separately?
Yeah. Would you, should we make the motion now?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to say? Okay.
So I move that the Select Board, for the purpose of setting the fiscal 2023 property tax rate, approve a residential factor of one, thereby establishing a uniform tax rate with no difference between the residential open space property classes and commercial industrial personal property classes.
Second.
All right. Any discussion about this?
So I just want to, I just want to ask the question because it seems like without as much background information and, and, you know, this is a great presentation. It seems like historically, this is what we have chosen is to have a single tax rate. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, from my research, the town of Carlisle has never adopted a residential factor other than one.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point for anybody listening.
Yeah. But we just never knew why.
It's, it's a matter of a very simple fact that our property is overwhelmingly residential, owner occupied. And if you impose a factor, you're going, you're going to move the needle very little for residents at the expense of commercial property owners. And that's the theory for why we do that.
All right. Well, if there's no more discussion, let us take a roll call vote. David seconded. So Arnold, I.
All right, I was muted. Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
All right. So that passes.
So, you know, this slide summarizes or the last five years in, for both the largest residential property classes, which include single families and condominiums. What you can see here is on the top, highlighted in orange, you can see our, the single family property class and in white, the condominium class. As you can see, both saw significant increases to the, you know, to the total percentage of a, a value increase from 22 to 23.
Excuse me, Brian, but with the orange highlighting, actually, at least for those in this room, it's quite hard to read that.
Is it? I do apologize.
No, that's okay. I think some of that is the, just the, the screen here in this room. Yeah. I just didn't know if I had people in the room.
I apologize. So.
No reason to apologize.
One of the things, important parts of this slide that I wanted to point out was, you know, the average single family tax bill increased $492 from the previous fiscal year, which is up 3.2%. Why is that above two and a half percent? And the, the answer is, is because not all real estate appreciates or depreciates at the same rate. So what you saw was a larger valuation increases to the lower end of the single family market. And the addition of larger new single family homes valued significantly above that 1.125 average single family valuation. That's the important point of what I wanted to take, take out of, of this information here. You know, the average single family tax, condominium tax bill was up 3.56, 2%, 5, 6%. Once again, this is due to the, the higher end construction at both Garrison Place and the Birch Lane condominiums and the appreciation of other existing condominium developments.
But, so to be clear, and I'm looking at Table Three, which is easier to read. So the condos went up the same 20%.
Cut this one? No.
Just essentially, yeah.
From 668 to 807 versus 900 something to 1,300, right? So they, everybody's going through the same inflation and the mill rate of whatever is applied to, whether it's a condo or a house, it's the same. So they just pay a lower bill just because they're not worth, they're not as expensive.
Yes. Everything in an ad blorum tax valuation state, which Massachusetts is, you pay according to value, which is, you know, my role or the Board of Assessors and the, the assessing department's role is to value all property equitably across the board. And that is why, you know, after doing my analysis and, and presenting this to the Board of Assessors, you know, you saw similar evaluation appreciation from fiscal 22 to fiscal 23 for both the, for both the single family and condominium property classes. Correct? Okay? Did that answer your question, David?
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. So option number two, open space discount. So open spaces, you know, is the land which is not otherwise classified, which is not taxable under the provisions of Chapter 61, 61A, or 61B. That's all chapter land, which I think everybody is familiar with here in Carlisle, or taxable under permanent conservation restriction. A land which is not held for the production of income but is maintained for an open and natural condition which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. So this, this granting of this exemption or allows for up to a 25% discount in the valuation of that, of an open space classified property. It would create a separate tax rate for the open space property that would be the 200 class versus the 100 class, which is, that would be all other residentially classified property. The shift, what this does do is the first vote, which is the selection of a residential factor, establishes the percentage of the levy borne by the residential open space classes and separately, the commercial industrial personal property classes. So this would be a shift within the residential open space percentage. This would shift additional tax burden from those properties that were granted in open and space discount and would shift that, the, the reduction of that tax levy onto the 100 property class, which would include the single family property class. So from my analysis of the assessors database, it appears that there would be 27 parcels that would, could or would qualify given those parameters. So just a couple of things before the board provides the recommendation. Looking at all 351 Massachusetts communities, there are only 13 that have granted the open space discount in fiscal 2022. You know, 311 of 351 cities in town have at least one chapter land property. The average number of chapter land properties in, in Middlesex County is 33. The number in Carlisle is 50, so it significantly exceeds the average number within Middlesex County alone. There are currently no properties classified as open space. So the adoption of this open space discount cannot be applied this year, but this is something I wanted to bring to the board's attention for next fiscal year. But one of the important things that I, I think it needs to be, you know, needs to be said is, you know, the chapter land classification for which many, many properties here in Carlisle seek, you know, it allows for property owners to seek tax relief while also providing the town of Carlisle the ability to recover lost real estate tax revenue from these parcels by the rollback or conveyance tax process. For those that are not familiar with this, once a property enters into a chapter, is, enters into the chapter land classification, it, it, it provides the town of Carlisle with the ability to reach to those taxes via these two different methods, the rollback or conveyance tax. It also provides the town of Carlisle with the potential option of purchasing that property within the future. So with that all said, the Board of Assessors does not recommend an open space discount of any percentage. Are there any questions?
Yeah. So if, if, if we were to do this, and let's, let's say it was 25% and all of the properties that would qualify did it, what would the cost be? In other words, what, what tax burden would be shifted? How much money?
That is a great question. So I think what, if you're looking at about 25%, 25 parcels currently that would qualify, these would all be 130 classified properties. So these are all properties that would be potentially developable as a single family property if the average, if the average valuation is in that 400, 500, $500,000 range. So if you saw that reduction, so from 500,000, if you just give me a quick second, to 400,000, you know, at that property tax rate of $14.15, if we applied that to, give me just a quick second here, I will do that calculation. I apologize. But I do think that this is a great question. I apologize not for having this right for you right now. Yes. So you would look at, yeah, so for a $500,000 valued undeveloped property, you would be looking at somewhere in the range of about $7,000 in annual taxes. Okay? If you were to redo, reduce these down to potential of, excuse me, you would reduce this down to a, a valuation of, say, 25% down to $400,000, you would see that reduction go down to $5,660 per parcel. At 27, you would see the shifting of the total tax burden go, that would be reduced by, let's see, just a moment. And I do apologize for not having this here. Moment.
Can I simplify? Isn't it, isn't it just the 100 or $125,000 delta times 27 properties times .1415? Isn't that the math?
Yeah. It, David, you're.
$400,000.
Yeah. You, you would be looking at, yeah, David has, has math here, and I do have to apologize. At about 1,000, was it 1,000 dollars, David? Yeah, about.
25% rollback on 400, 500,000. So.
Yeah.
$100,000 times 27 is 27. It's 2.7 million times .1415, which is like $400,000.
And that would be shifted on to the residential tax base. But, but you're saying here that there currently are no properties classified as open space.
Nope. Most, yeah.
What if there was a?
This would be, this would be $38,000 in shift. It would be $100,000 or, you know, it'd be 20, the total tax implication would be $38,205, which would be shifted back to the residential, the other residential property classes. So that, that amount of money would be picked up by, would be added onto the average single family tax bill that you're looking at. How much potentially, you know, there are, you know, 1,798 single families? While not, while not significant, I just think the logic behind it and the recommendation that the board does not recommend this to the Select Board to adopt this type of an exemption is simply the, you know, the significance in the, with, of chapter land here within the community. I think people are familiar with that here. And it also protects the town's tax revenue without burdening the rest of the residential class with the additional tax burden.
I have kind of a question. And, and I think it's the question that Nathan asked, but it's really hard. You know, we're getting the speakers over there and I don't know, it's really hard to hear. So just, I want to apologize if I'm asking the same question. But what is the difference between vacant land and open space land? Isn't there some sort of burden to prove to prove that if it's not just a vacant lot, but you just haven't built on, that you actually have to have maintained something? So it says maintained in an open or natural condition. You know, natural condition could be overgrown with weeds, but, you know, what, what qualifies something as an open space, you know?
That, that's a great, that's a great question, Kate. I think that, that's probably up to debate as to whether it's, it's, you know, whether, whether it be maintained, whether, I know that invasive species tend to be an issue here or whether that property, if it, you know, and, you know, it has been, is, is really subjective given the amount of wetlands that you have here in Carlisle too. How much maintenance can be done to some of these parcels, given that there's so much, given the buffer in the do not disturb zone that the, the Conservation Commission is so, you know, strict with maintaining those, those bylaws in the do not disturb area? That is a great question, Kate. I think that's up for interpretation. I, I don't think I can give you a, a definitive answer to that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think in the interest of time and also given the recommendations from the Board of Assessors, yeah.
I move that the board does not grant an open space discount.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
All right. That passes unanimously. And if we could, so the next one is the residential exemption, correct?
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. So we, I don't know if, Brian, if we might be able to wrap this up in another five minutes?
Sure. I'll make this one very quick. So with regard, residential exemption, so the board, the Select Board may grant a residential exemption for all. for all residential properties in town that are owner occupied. So this allows a reduction in the assessed value of the qualified residential property by a percentage of the average assessed value of all residentially classified property, with exemption percentages ranging between 0 and 35% of the average assessed residential value, which is $1,048,947. So that is calculated by dividing the total value of the residential class by the total number of residential parcels, which results in that number. So to qualify for this exemption, it must be a residential property, single family condominium or two-family home. Property must be owner occupied as of January 1st of 2022. The table that you see here now, it shows the different, I'd just like to point out, it shows the different exemption percentages ranging between 0 and 35%. It also demonstrates what would happen to the average adjusted single family value, which would be reduced by the percentage of that $1,048,948 valuation you see to your left. And what I'd also like to point out is a couple of important points is the, what happens to the adjusted single family tax bill and the percentage decrease to that single family tax bill ranging between 0 and 35%. You can see what the impact here, and I've included the condominiums as well, as they, the average condominium value is significantly less than the average residential value and the average adjusted single family value. You can see that what would happen is if these are, if an exemption percentage is granted, it would have minimal effect on the average single family tax bill while significantly reducing, you know, the condominium class, given that it would be reducing the taxable percentage of that assessed value far more significantly. So a shift would result in basically shifting the residential burden of the tax levy to those properties valued above that average residential value that you see before you. So those valued below would reap significant cost savings as opposed to those valued above would see significantly, significant increases to their average single family tax bill. So with that said, the Board of Assessors does not recommend a residential exemption of any percentage. Are there any questions?
Yeah, is the theory of even doing this that you're trying to grant relief to people who own and occupy homes of lower value, presumably more working class, let's say? And it's kind of like a progressive, what's the, you know?
Yeah, progressive tax?
That's my understanding.
Right, so it works where you have a community that, what I think you're saying is it works in a community where you have, you know, a lot of working people who have a home and you're trying to help them keep their home, right? And then rich people, they may, is the occupation thing's almost a red herring? It's almost like just by your value, your home, if you have high owner occupancy, right? It kind of makes us two different things, right?
Well, you have, you're making two points. It could be, I can tell you that if you look at the communities that have adopted the residential exemption in Massachusetts, it's not necessarily seen as a progressive tax, so to speak, for the owners of residential property that occupy, that consider that property their domicile. What it does do, it's used by communities that have a large percentage of second homes. So you see a lot of communities on Cape Cod adopt this residential exemption in order to reduce the annual tax burden of those people that live there year round. Or you see an adopted, a residential exemption adopted by communities, you know, in, close to Boston. So that would include any for Boston, Brooklyn, Cambridge, Chelsea, you know, Everett. So these have a large percentage, not only a large percentage of non-qualifying residential properties such as apartments or non-owner or investment property, which would not qualify, once again, with the goal to reduce the tax burden of those that own and occupy their residential property in those communities. Carlisle, along with most of the bedroom communities in Massachusetts, this type of an exemption just doesn't make any sense and which is why it hasn't been adopted by more communities in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
It also seems to be kind of counter to kind of our goal of having a diversity of different housing options for people. Because it would, you know, kind of discourage rentals.
It really kind of changes the philosophical foundation for how you assess property taxes, I think, when you start down that road. Because at that point, the burden isn't really purely based on value. You've shifted that.
Interesting.
Okay.
I move that the select board does not adopt a residential exemption.
Second. Second, all right, David has seconded that. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
That motion passes. All right, the last one, the small commercial exemption.
Yep, you know, with the small percentage of commercial here in Carlisle, I think the information I can make available on the screen if, or make available later to the public, make this presentation available on the assessor website. But I think in the end, you know, the board does not recommend a small commercial exemption of any type. I think it would result in there, it's very difficult to determine whether a property owner actually runs the business for which it's currently operating. I think from my analysis, I'm only seeing two parcels that would qualify. So after discussing this with the board, the board does not recommend a small commercial exemption of any percentage.
Excellent, want to make that motion?
I move that we do not, that the select board does not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
All right, that motion carries.
We acknowledge, I move that we acknowledge that the Board of Assessors has informed the select board that the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2023 is $3,341,972.5.
Do we have to vote on that?
No. No. Just for the purposes. We're acknowledging.
Great. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Brian, for your presentation. Much more informational than we've had in the past, much more educational, yes. And to you, Ken, for your work as the Chair of the Board, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you, and thanks for your considerations.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Brian. All right, let's move ahead to the discussion about our emergency management, both the committee and also the appointment of an emergency manager. So this is page, we have a motion on page 23, which is about the emergency manager appointment. But maybe we should discuss the, do we want to take that first? The motion to appoint our new manager? And then we'll go, all right, so that should be on page 23 in the packet.
I move to appoint Fire Chief Brian Soros to serve as the emergency manager for the town of Carlisle.
Second. Second.
All right, Nathan has seconded that. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. I would just say that we're very pleased with your interest and willingness to do this. Thank you.
Historically, the fire chief was the LEPC manager, but in the transition, Chief Fisher took it and then it just didn't seem anyway.
That was quite appropriate.
This is appropriate now.
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect.
And this is kind of the more to the norm within our county. It's a fire.
But we have a motion on the floor, right? So let's take a vote then on that, a roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Excellent, and thank you, Chief Soros. All right, so let's discuss, do you want to walk us through the points here? Or is that for you, Ryan, who's, you're going to do that, Brian, okay?
So are we talking about LEPC or are we talking about what the emergency manager does?
Oh, no, LEPC, we're going to go back and talk about LEPC, yeah.
Yeah, and is somebody going to show that on the screen or? Well, I just think for the people at home, it would be nice for them to be able to follow along.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're, the LEPC is supposed to be a planning thing. And generally, that's what it was for a long time. We kind of got into the mode in the last couple of years, especially with COVID, of it being more a, what you might call in our world, a unified command, where you get decision makers in the room for COVID, and we were meeting weekly and we were making decisions and we were getting things done and all. And that's, that's not really what an LEPC in, that's one form of what an LEPC can do, but it's really, its main role is to do long-term planning. There, the MEMA has a set of guideline of the kinds of things you should have a plan for. Make sure you have a plan for those things. Think about your community, what are your risks in your community? And what would you do if you have to try to mitigate those risks? You know, do you need a shelter? What's important about your shelter, you know? How do you get people there? What are your, you know, do you have a hospital, a nursing home? What are your risks and what are you going to do? Do you have hazmat situations, et cetera? So all of these kinds of things, you should be thinking about in your community. So in your community, where do you have those risks? What are you going to do about them? What kind of plans do you have? So that's kind of the idea, and it's, the idea is to have cooperation between, and synergies between different departments in the town and different groups in the town, including volunteers, et cetera, to have a townwide plan and response. So in recent years, like I say, we've been doing more of the specific emergencies. So we've met, for example, not non-COVID related, but when we had the heat emergency. So we knew we were going to have a heat emergency. What are our issues? You know, and that's where you might think, how's your library and your LEPC? Well, they're there because they were a wonderful shelter, as long as we had electricity for elderly people in need of air conditioning, et cetera. The schools likewise, or whatever. So the long-term things, we should be having an emergency management plan. We should be updating it yearly or by every other year. You know, we have, one of the things I need to do is try to figure out what the state of what we have and what our most recent is. What I have is a book about that thick that is quite dated. My understanding is that electronically, that was updated not more recently, but it's still, I'm sure it's five years old by now, if it's, that would be the most recent thing we have. So we need to look about that. One of the things, if, look at what our risks are. I'm not looking to get grants just because, just to get grants, but what are our risks and are there any grants to help us mitigate those? You know, what are our risks? You know, we have, we're a different kind of community than others. You know, we don't have some of the hazmat type situations, but we have a load of trees and we have electrical issues and we have, you know, so what are our needs and what are our issues? And so what kind of strategic assets do we need to be thinking about? So those are the kinds of things that an LEPC that met, say, twice a year, would go over and try to make sure we were ready for. Who would be on it? This led by the town's emergency manager, and these are the types of people who would be on it. And so like to do, you know, when we're having, this is the difference between, we have a heat event, what do we do about it? Well, your planning board is not going to be on that group. But this is more of a long-term planning thing, and it might involve changing some of the, you know, some of the rules for doing developments, you know? Do we need to think about how we do systems? Do we need to think about whatever? So it involves, again, the decision makers, the people who can think about from their group, how as a town, we can bring everybody together with synergies. In our world, we ought to, go ahead. So if we have expected impending emergencies, this is more of an ad hoc decision-making for unified command. And here, we organize resources, we're still in communication, et cetera. So we can go on, the kind of people you would have here, you might have more volunteers, some of the kinds of groups we also have that might be included here is like our ham operators. You know, those kinds of things that we have, we pull together. And again, here, you know, definitely DPW and some of these people are key.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
So why would there really be a difference between these two? Because to me, all the people on this list really have a role in the planning portion. And all the people who are involved in the planning should be involved in the decision-making. I don't see a difference.
The distinction I was making was more about what, I think many of you think of what the LEPC does in that, oh, we have a storm coming, what are we going to do about it? And me saying, there's two roles for the LEPC. There's the short term and there's the long term. Who's involved? You know, to me, yeah, the libraries could be involved in both, but basically whoever's has a part of the action is who you involve.
Yeah, but, so, I mean, to, an observation and comment. So observation, which I think you made, is because in COVID, it was such a, it is such a long-term situation that the LEPC was accustomed to meeting regularly, not episodically, right? So we've established that. And then the, and I totally agree with you that, you know, preventative is really important. And then I, from my view, the decision makers that involve large, I don't know how to say it exactly. Let's just use like CPS. CPS must be involved in planning and execution because they house like a quarter of the population at any given moment.
They're also our.
And the biggest facility.
Facility.
They are our shelter. Right, that is our established shelter, so absolutely.
Yeah, so I agree, and I just, I think the committee, however it's made up, should be the same. Sometimes people can't always make a meeting and they don't need to, but.
Sure, sure. Like I say, I, you know, whether you need the planning board involved in planning for, they're one of the ones I would not necessarily say would be in both. You know, if you have a storm coming, the planning board doesn't really need to be there. If you're thinking about what the risks are in our town, finding them and establishing them, that would be one.
If you're meeting regularly, they're the preventive guys, and then when there's an emergency, you call them.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So things we should be on, you know, Carlisle Raider, you know, we're always ice storms or, you know, we specialize in them. You know, we end up, if the wind blows, we're going to lose power somewhere in town, et cetera. But one of the things we need to obviously be thinking about is continuity of services within our town. And we're good in parts of it and parts of it we're not, and we need to think about that. What happens if town hall doesn't have power for a week? Is that a problem? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but we need to think through what the implications of those things are. You know, if we lose power and our trash comebackers can't run, is that a problem or is it not a problem? And what have we done about it, and et cetera? Those are things I don't necessarily even know the answer to, you know? So find them out and be ready. And what kind of services for residents we need? And, you know, if we lost internet access for a period of time, what does that be? And what do we do about that? We have, yeah, so, well, as a town.
Did you say panic?
You can keep your garbage for a long time.
But, so.
Cell phones, just, you know, who has a landline anymore?
Right.
You know?
But, but so, you know, and providing town services, we're starting to pin more and more on that. And so what do we have, you know? And so what what do we have, you know? Find wireless hotspot, so wireless hotspot, but is that cell tower, have backup, et cetera. So just figuring out all these kinds of things. Transportation issues, you know, people I I mentioned this when we were doing the the planning board stuff was with Bedford Bridge. If we lost that, we'd have a significant issue. And then I had some of those people get on a boat and get on a boat and send me some pictures. And they were shocked by what it looks like under that bridge. It's held up by telephone poles that are largely rotten. And so it's a thing, it's a thing, you know, so what
That's our bridge, it's on our side, that's our bridge.
No, no, it's a state, it's a state, state asset, but we should think about what happens if we
Yeah.
would lose something like that.
Yeah.
Already, I I have a special exemption from the state to bring a fire truck over that bridge because every one of our trucks is overweight. It's five miles an hour down the center line. But be thinking about those things, be be thinking about what happens when you when you lose them, et cetera. You know, major flooding for us, we it happens. It happens especially when we lose power. Some pumps then don't work, and and we've had some, I've seen some pretty extreme flooding, but it tends not to be, you know, hundreds of houses are washing things down the road or or things like that, et cetera. So one of the things, obviously, for that I think about, keeps me up at night, is the extreme brush fires just because of who we are and where we are. You know, we we would rather try to be ready for it than to tell people to, you know, clear cut long distances from their houses and that kind of thing. That's that's just who we are. So be thinking about that. With whatever you want to think about, climate change, weather is gonna be getting weird and prolonged drought and things like that. Be thinking about, now, we have, you know, Village Court, Benfield, if they become uninhabitable for reason, so what do we do? Be thinking about those things. Because obviously, it can happen. For us, the only big infrastructure thing we have is the natural gas pipeline. Other than that, really hazmat, we don't have a huge huge thing. You know, where is our emergency operations center and what are the alternates? So but if it's kind of think about what happens if the police station becomes uninhabitable, what do we? What do we do? You know, where we have a backup dispatch over in Chelmsford, fine, let's set up. How does that really work? And start doing a tabletop exercise on some of those kinds of things. Because as our communication systems have changed, has has it all caught up with that? Again, there's things we need to be thinking through. So less concerning about Carlisle, when you go to fill out your your form, you're gonna be asked about, you know, what are you gonna do about terrorism and civil disobedience and things like that? Obviously, for us, not as direct a concern. We just have to think through and and round ideas.
We we're we do have to think about earthquakes because we're on granite, and an earthquake in New Hampshire will travel through that rock right down to us, so it's not like we don't get earthquakes here. I'm a California girl, so
I'll be honest with you, I I put this together for our staff meeting, and a largely part of what I did with this is to sponsor the discussion. So to have Sylvia look at me and say, what do you mean dams aren't gonna, you know, and and fine, let's 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 get this out here, and let's say, what would really happen if we had a dam failure? What would happen if we had an earthquake? Where are vulnerabilities? And have, exactly, and so
But time is not infinite, so I think what you're saying is, let's cover the first list first.
Yeah, exactly, right.
But but also, if somebody has a reason why, you know, let's bring this up, then this is this is point of discussion. Anyway, so we've we've done emergency planning work in this town. People have done a a lot of things. Fire department has a fair number of assets to try to help us. One of the reasons we spent the money for a pretty reasonable-sized generator for the school was exactly for shelter. Our fire department, we do, we get a lot of generators, et cetera. One of the things I've been trying to do more recently is try to make sure we have some generators that can power computers because more and more people have medical equipment in their homes that are computer-based. And, you know, if we need to be able to power them, you can't have a dirty, real dirty power generator trying to power those things. You need something with produces clean power. So I've been updating some of our things as I took some of our civil dispense money and and got some things. You know, portable pumps, we have a lot of things. Board of Health has has um some equipment. We've gotten some things on grants, you know, there's a set of tables in the fire station we got on a grant because and we store them for the Board of Health there because they know they need to be able to set up some tables and chairs someplace if we have an event, so, you know, get have those things, have them, we know where they are, et cetera. So assets we have.
Let's see if we can finish up just in a minute or two, thanks, Brian.
So one of the things also we've done is to kind of kept and maintained some things that we don't necessarily use all the time. You know, we don't use a second ambulance all the time, but boy, during COVID, it was really nice to know that you had that in the back pocket. You know, we've kept things around, we part of having a fire department that we have, it really helps you in dealing with emergency situations. You don't just have three men and a truck, you have thirty guys and six trucks. And that makes a big difference. So things we have, things we ought to be considering, or we might consider in the LEPC. Some of our communication towers don't have backup power. Make sure we have a plan for that, et cetera. One of the things, for a couple of years, we kept a NeRak generator here, and I might talk to them about whether we do that again. Just just keep one of their generators here. So a generator on wheels that can produce a significant amount of power. Or whether we wanted to have it, but then, you know, if we want town hall to be powered, it probably needs a transfer. You need to be set up ahead of time with a transfer switch and a way to to do it. You don't wanna be, you know, standing there with your wires, hooking it up, and yeah.
Long extension cord.
Yeah. So so be thinking about these kinds of things.
Yeah.
And active threat prevention is something that both police and fires and the schools are all working on. Most immediate threats, and this is where this winter there's been a lot of discussion of of rolling blockouts because of the natural gas shortages when they have this one. You know, they're not gonna short the pipes coming to your home because that's very dangerous. But electrical generation in this area is very dependent on natural gas. And it's either gonna get very expensive, or it might, we might have some long blackouts.
Okay, that's what I guess you would have. Yeah. Well, thank you, Brian. Yeah, that's very comprehensive and
So you're gonna, that's kind of a mission you're taking on to start.
Yeah, so part of part of an emergency manager is heading the LEPC. And my guess is that you know, we'd be trying to to meet twice a year to look at work on these things, and then I will, as a task, take on updating our emergency plan. One of the things it can be a really nice opportunity for is in the summer times, we have interns sometimes who want to do work, and it's a really nice thing because they have a something that they did that they can be proud of, that here's here's what I did for this town. And that that can be something that works out well. So we might look for that opportunity.
I think it's really great that sounds like we'll be proactive rather than reactive. Thank you for refreshing and update the plan because obviously, it seems like it's might be a little creaky, and it sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Your leadership there.
Thank you, Brian. All right, well, let's move on, and I apologize to our municipal facilities committee, because I know we're kind of running late, but for the police chief search. Let's see. Well, is the is Chief Fong on the, is he with us remotely at all tonight, or we're not keeping, we're not holding anybody up? Okay, all right, yeah, so let's do that. Let's reverse the order then and move the municipal, unless unless there was somebody else, Bill, or I don't know if, did I see Jerry Lerman on the
Who's the phone number that ends in zero zero four three?
Well, I saw Jerry's name.
Jerry's name is right at the bottom.
Yeah, Jerry, so Jerry, if you're ready, we'll move the municipal facilities. Well, it's really, it's it's a little bit past, it's five minutes late now if we do it now. So Jerry, are you there and are you ready?
I see him on the list.
He's on the bottom.
He's on the bottom right there.
You wanna unmute yourself, Nathan, or? What's he saying?
That was John Lavery, had the questions.
Okay. It says mute, man.
Yeah, can you, can you unmute Jerry?
Or you can chat with him.
You can't, you're just mute, unmute himself.
Huh.
Okay, so let's, can you ask him to unmute?
I did, I did.
Okay.
All right. Well, if you want to, if we want to just take a look at our packets, we're, it's page one sixteen in our packets that we're gonna move to. I know you have a different setup.
If you do that, yes. That's what I do, okay, review a men's charter.
Yeah, so we have
Twenty-three goals and additional supports and needs.
Yeah.
Well, maybe
I might be able to fill in.
Or or Bill, I don't know if you wanna come on up and you and between you and Travis kind of get us started.
If Jerry just stepped away for a minute.
So, um, yeah, so welcome, Bill, and when Jerry joins us, welcome Jerry. As two members of the municipal facilities committee. And now we have on the screen our, what's in our packet here.
Why don't we wait and see if he comes on for goals, because Jerry put that together. Let's let's talk first about the the charter, because that's what we came here before we this is what the municipal facilities committee came before and talked about revising the charter. And so the the board has put together a new charter or revised charter that I think more accurately reflects what we had talked about in the select board meeting and as well as what we'd talked about in several municipal facility committee meetings. And I don't have it in front of me, I'm still scrolling, but
It's page one eighteen, if that helps.
Generally, it 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 follows the the kind of protocols that we talked about where we're we're giving the facility manager, Steve Bastek, a little more of a specific budget and control of that, and but subject to a review from the town administrator. So it really frees up the municipal facilities committee from the day-to-day oversight of that and more into, you know, focusing on the strategic and budgeting things that I think the municipal facility committee should be focused on. So if you've had a chance to read it, it's shorter, it's it's one page, it's a little more succinct.
Having been on the MFC, I kind of wish we'd done this a couple of years ago because I think this is a good step in the right direction for the MFC. I think you might wanna even, you know, refine it more as you go on and you get if possibly, we get a little more staff to help with doing some of these things, but this, I think, is tremendous.
The last sentence where we want to review every three years is a minimal
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, and I thought that was a really great idea, too.
Sorry, say that again, Bill, where did you?
I'll second the last sentence.
Oh, the charter be reviewed every three years, gotcha. Gotcha, yeah, okay.
The only other thing that came up with this draft was was discussion was a joint membership between the school committee and the MFC so that we don't have we had what happened with one of the members when the school committee member, you know, ran out of her time and and a new one was appointed, then we had this mismatch when we really needed the school committee to be part of this facilities committee. So it should be maybe a concurrent term, if you will, or is that could be happening or something like that.
And is that included in here somehow?
No, it isn't.
Okay.
But there was something that we had talked about that
Well, it's what's in here, though, is that it says one will be a member of the school committee.
But it doesn't say when the school committee leaves that committee. But that person is still a member of the facilities committee, it's not, it's not dependent.
The reason there was a mismatch before was because this was not in there. And so although she was a member of the school the school committee, she wasn't there as an official member of the school committee, and we felt that we should have an official school committee member on there to could actually speak for the school or and bring information back, so then we ended up with two people.
Well, as it stated here, you still can have that because, you know, depending on what term the facilities committee is, it's different than the term of the school committee, you'll have the same
But then that school committee would just appoint a new person, right?
Exactly.
If they had to leave, yeah.
Yeah, but
If they if they go off the school committee, they would go off the MFC, presumably.
The same is true of the select board member, so that happens, and they just have to roll off, and the select board then just has to choose a new member among themselves to go on.
Right.
One other thing to note in this is that the bottom, it's structured a little bit differently because the municipal facilities committee wanted to make it clear that that the committee is responsible for the ongoing kind of maintenance, review, and budgeting of the existing facilities. But as the select board or the town decides they want to do a new facility or some major renovation, that the it's the thought of the municipal facilities committee that you would appoint a new committee or some subgroup to or some group to study that, of which there would be always two members of the municipal facilities committee so that you have kind of some institutional knowledge of the systems, and I think could be really helpful going forward. So I just wanted to make sure everyone on the select board is aware of that, so as we go forward, if there are those types of things, that we make sure we put someone, two people from municipal facilities on that.
So we should, that's an important thing for us to remember, and that's covered in the, yeah, the large the paragraph that starts large capital facility projects.
Correct.
Okay.
So I was at the M the MAGIC meeting today, which is the MAGIC is a sub group of MAPC, and it was select, they were talking about legislative initiatives for next year. And one of them that they, the MAGIC is actually going to be working on will be to ask this the state to do a funding of new buildings similar to the school building fund, but for municipal buildings. They said that that it's not just our town. Since two and a half, the ma- maintenance on buildings has fallen behind because that was the thing that kind of got shut, you know? And now everybody's buildings are falling apart at the same time and having all these, you know, deferred maintenance things. So hope, there is some hope that maybe we'll get, you know, we'll have a white knight come and help save us a little bit for some of our the state
The state, yeah.
For new capital facility projects.
That's us, Kate.
Yeah, I, well, I know, but the thing is that they already have our money, and they would just give it back to us at least.
Right.
Right, I mean, because, right?
Yeah. So do we, you know, sometimes we will approve something that we're discussing for the first time at that same meeting, and sometimes we will wanna review it and then come back and adopt it. So I would like a sense of the board of whether we are prepared to adopt this revised charter tonight.
Let me ask, so it it sounds from the bottom of this that you guys, you guys voted
Jerry's on two.
Oh, hi, Jerry.
Are you there, Jerry? Hi.
Yes, I am, I'm, you 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 got you got to us faster than I expected.
Bumped you to the front of the line because we know it's, you're a very important guy.
Yeah, we we bumped the police chief search below below you now. So anyway, hi, welcome.
Hi, so with with regard to the the membership of the facilities committee and possible conflicts with a school committee member and their term, my understanding is that the select board can appoint people to the facilities committee, they can also unappoint people. So if somebody is on the the MFC and also on the school committee, and they leave the school committee, the select board could unappoint them from the MFC and appoint a new school committee member. Is is that not the case?
Well, well, I would say it it goes further. I'm just thinking about with the CPC representatives, right? So the Recreation Commission has a representative, and that person so they were on the commission as a commission member, and then they were also representing the Recreation Commission at the CPC committee. And when they went off the Recreation Commission, they automatically were no longer they automatically were no longer a member of the CPC. And so the Recreation Commission, you know, voted to appoint a different person to represent the commission. That's the way I would see this one, that this is a school committee, this is a school committee position, in a sense, right? And so when the person on the school committee leaves the school committee, they would also no longer be a part of the MFC and the school committee would be responsible for determining a new appointment that then the, the select board would, could appoint.
Well, I think it's covered. It says, "One of the members will be a member of the school committee." So if a person is a member of the MFC and then is no longer a member of the school committee, they're off.
After the school committee can...
Right.
I, I believe that language was already in the previous document, too, so...
Yeah, so I, I don't, I think this is fine the way it is.
I wouldn't worry about it.
Are there any other comments on the, on the revision here? Because I think we should go ahead and decide whether we want to adopt it tonight.
I see no reason not to.
I mean, again, I was asking the question, you guys did approve it within your committee, right? I saw the 11, 10...
Yes, yes, right.
So I'm okay with that. Been vetted enough.
Nathan, any comment?
I, I do not.
Okay. Then I'd accept a motion.
I move, we accept this newly drafted Municipal Facilities Committee charter, which originally was adopted 12, 13, 16, amended 4, 16, 18 and 4, 9, 19. And this would be the 11, 10, 22 revision.
Second.
Well, it'll say newer date of adoption will be...
Well, what you're trying to say is when it was adopted by the MFC?
Yes.
Yeah. So did the MFC approve it on the 10th of November?
Yes, at our November 10th meeting.
Yeah.
It's okay.
That's all right. All right, may I have a second?
I did, I seconded it.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. All right, any more discussion? Then let's have a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
O'Gall, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Excellent, okay.
Can we go over now just the quick goals?
Back up to the goals, yeah. So Jerry, do you want to walk us through the goals for FY23 that we have here in our packets?
Sure. I, one, one word of caution. We, the committee didn't actually put these goals together because I didn't know about them prior to our, our last meeting on November 10. So this is kind of pasted together with some feedback from the committee, but we haven't actually deliberated on these things. So the, the first, the first goal has to do with the, the organizational structure of, of, of the maintenance department. That's an, an ongoing sort of project. And one of our goals is to work toward combining and, and changing the organization of, of the maintenance, of the town facilities manager, the school facilities manager, creating a maintenance department that is properly funded and is responsible for operational maintenance issues in, in the town rather than the Municipal Facilities Committee handling that. We made some, some steps in that direction. We've had discussions with the school. Ryan has been very helpful in providing some organizational guidance. So I think we're taking steps in that direction. But I would like to see us move, move towards something more formal during the, the coming year. Another townwide goal is, one of the things that, that we've been struggling with is elevators. There are several elevators in town. We want to, and we've made steps toward regularizing the maintenance of those elevators. We also need to plan for refurbishing several elevators in town that are nearing the end of their projected lifetime. We have several projects that are, that are going on at the library. The rooftop ventilation unit is in progress right now and we, we need to see that through to completion. Once that's done, the roofing project will get started. The bid documents for that have been prepared. It will go out, or it may actually be released for bids. We expect to have bids in place in December and that project would start probably in April. Another project at the library, once, once all the heavy equipment for the rooftop unit and the roofing project have come and gone, repaving the parking lot is, is something that really needs to happen.
But the, excuse me, but don't you think there's going to be some heavy equipment going in and out when they redo the, the interior? Don't you think that would be better to wait until that interior gets done?
Well, that, that's a definite maybe. We don't have a timeframe on when the interior project is going to happen.
Yeah, they've got, they're working on it, though. They're working on fundraising.
And, well, that's, that's a question that would be open for discussion with the, the library. If, if they want to wait until after the renovation, sure. If the renovation is going to happen in two years, then maybe we don't want to wait. But that's a discussion.
And would the repaving be something you'd put out to bid? Or is that something that the DPW would be able to...
I think it depends on the extent of, of work that needs to happen. And typically, the DPW contracts out a lot of the road paving that they do.
Right.
But...
There's some curbing and then some sidewalks that should be fixed at the same time as the paving. So I, I think it, it would be wise to have it maybe engineered and competitive bid put out instead of just tiring somebody.
And there are also some questions about, is there any way to expand the number of parking spaces?
Hold on, guys, Jerry's talking. Sorry, Jerry, hard to hear. Say that again, please.
There, there also is the possibility of reconfiguring things somehow to create more parking spaces.
Hmm. Yeah, okay.
So that's a project. At the DPW, there is the ongoing project with the trailer and getting the sprinkler system installed and the ADA ramp installed. The ramp is by far the simpler part of that project. We've been struggling with getting somebody to give us engineering work for the sprinklers. Another large project with DPW is redoing the roof. The, the roof is quite old, has lots of leaks. They've been living with it for a long time. We've had some estimates on that project and it will be several hundred thousand dollars. It's a, it's a large project. And then there's the issue of the salt shed. DPW needs more space for storing salt and sand and that means either expanding the existing salt shed or building a new salt shed or building an additional structure. At Town Hall, there are several big projects that, that we'd like to get in the works at least. One is the rooftop unit at Town Hall is, is at the end of its projected life, lifespan. It has several projects, several problems that Steve Bestick and Bill Rissel have been intending to, to keep it running. But at some point, it will be difficult to keep it going, so it really needs to be replaced. At the time that happens, repairing and insulating the roof at Town Hall is another project that ought to happen. Those are two pretty large projects. A, a third project that's, that's much lower priority is doing, redoing the parking lot at Town Hall. There are ongoing issues, especially when there are elections or a lot of traffic. The way people get in and out of the parking lot is, is problematic and, and a safety issue, I think. Police station, we've been struggling with supply chain issues to get the ADA ramp installed that replaces the out-of-service handicap elevator. We have a contractor and we have a contract and they're waiting for parts. So that's a project that hopefully will be completed in the coming fiscal year. Fire station, pretty much our, our role at the fire station right now is, is supporting whatever the, whatever the chief feels is necessary at the fire station. The, the, the project about insulating the, the garage bay doors is something that we would only undertake if it seems likely that, that that fire station will continue to be used. If the Public Safety Facilities Task Force comes up with a recommendation that, that means the existing fire station will not be used or be used for something else or be modified in some way, then it doesn't make sense to put money into dealing with the garage doors. So that, it's pretty much all the things, all the major projects that, that are kind of in the works. There are lots of little ongoing things and those, we now have a mechanism for handling those with, without the facilities committee getting involved. The town facilities manager has a, a budget of money that he can use to handle small operational repairs like replacing lighting fixtures and, and doing things that are on the order of a few thousand dollars. So that's the state of things at the moment.
I, I have a question about funding because I'm concerned. I know you have one project that got funded by ARPA, that's the library rooftop unit only, though, right? Did you get, did you require, did you request roof funds for the roof as well?
For...
For the library?
No.
No, so, I mean, because, so I guess what I'm concerned about also is that they, they will run out, you know, that we have to get them used up. And we, we know we have a backlog of projects. So I guess I'm putting my ARPA committee hat on and hoping that you will apply for ARPA funds for your engineering studies and I will go ahead and start getting those engineering studies done for every project you think you need engineering for. Because at least that would then, we would have that all in place and you would have all your specs in place so that when you were ready to get off the ground, you could, you have that done.
That's, that's a great idea. One, one of the things that, that Ryan is helping us with is enlisting as a, an engineering contractor that will work on various projects that, that can be on call to provide expertise for doing engineer studies of various kinds rather than having to go out and find somebody every time we have a project that will also help a lot with dealing with some of the smaller projects that require engineering but aren't, aren't large enough so that we can attract the attention of companies that are looking for, for bigger projects.
Yeah. You were lucky with the maintenance room in the library that you could piggyback on their interior thing to get that done. But, yeah, that's a...
Kate's talking about money, but I'm concerned with throughput because you've got plenty of money. It's been the capacity to get projects done. That's a pretty ambitious list. So which of those things can be done in this, this, what is it? Are we looking at fiscal '24 that we're talking about?
This is fiscal '23 goals, success.
These are '23 goals, we're deep into '23. So what's going to get done in '23 and what's, what is going to get done in '24?
Well, the, the proj, the projects at Town Hall will be started in '23 but will, will almost certainly not be completed in '23.
Yeah.
I have a, a general comment, also putting my hat on as the liaison to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. So are you, when you're looking at these various projects, are you also considering the environmental and energy, you know, reduction sort of, wearing that hat of trying to reduce the fossil fuel imprint, et cetera? Yeah.
Yes, yes, we are, but that, I mean, that's a, that's a, a hard, a hard line to walk. For instance, at the library, the rooftop unit was initially a gas-fired unit and that's been, the unit that's being installed is a heat pump unit, so it's not using gas. But the, the, the hard trade-offs to make, often the most energy-efficient and sustainable solutions to a problem are substantially more expensive than other, than other solutions and...
And also to operate, to run, like they did at the library is going to end up probably being a, a larger cost than it would have been if we used natural gas for at least the upcoming 10 years or so.
A larger cost to...
Energy.
In terms of the electric usage?
Yes. Versus the gas prices.
Yeah.
And so, but, you know, those are the trade-offs that you're going to make, you know, in order to get off of the fossil fuel in the short term.
And I, I mean, I think it'd be helpful to have, be transparent about that, right? So that we understand and are making a conscious choice, you know, one way or the other, but based on knowing what would meet, you know, energy reduction goals versus the cost of something else.
And since the town is a stretch code and the new stretch code coming out December 1st, that's kind of one of the reasons why the facilities committee decided to change it from a natural gas unit to a heat pump. Because we're all going to be in that boat when the new stretch code hits the town.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Thank you for considering that.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, Nathan.
So one, I always get confused on the fiscal years. Aren't we in fiscal year '23 now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so these are goals for this year, the next seven months?
Well, in, yes. But the larger projects will certainly, will certainly extend into FY '24.
Okay. So I just, I just, I agree with Dave. I think it's a, it's a great list, but it's an awful lot of things. The, the first goal, it's not up anymore, but the first goal was around combining the facilities for the school and the town and creating a funded department. The, the title of it was, you know, kind of like, almost kind of like a look into it. Or I'm just wondering if at the end of that you should say, "For example," or something like that just because I think it's always hard when you have a goal that it's out of your hands as to whether or not it's completed or not. And so you don't have, you don't have control over whether or not that can happen like you do on all the other ones, since you're just kind of giving yourself, you know, like, present the possibility or something like that so that you're not, you're not putting down a goal that is not entirely in your hands whether or not you're successful or not.
Well, and, and that's partly on purpose because for the other projects, they're well-defined. For the first goal, it's, it's not so well-defined and exactly how, how we go about doing that and what it looks like is, is part of what the project is.
And is that, are you, are you involved in developing a, a budget for this? And thinking about that as going through the... And thinking about that as going through the, the budget process for this fiscal year, I mean, for FY twenty four? Are you not that far along yet?
I can speak to that. So the. The municipal facilities committee has more, has more money than it can spend before some of the funds expire. Cause the, the votes are in three year increments. So one thing that the. See, I worked on is creating a pot of money with the existing money to do standalone maintenance. And then we hope to procure two or three design firms in the next month or so. In order to spend some of that money on the design, which would allow some projects to go forward in the spring. And then I think you'll see a fast track of projects that are progressing in FY twenty four. So a lot of what's been said here is correct. Expediting the design part will make the projects move faster. And there is existing funding more than really can be spent in this fiscal year to conduct some projects.
Except that. That money can be turned back over to the town and the ARPA money, if we don't spend that. Has to go back to the federal government, so I would rather see you spend the ARPA money first, return this other stuff to the town, or, and/or. Have us hire some, a project manager to start moving these projects along, because part of the reason they're not, uh, gone along. It's because we don't have staff to, uh, ride herd on them.
Is, is that something that ARPA money could be used for?
It can be used for anything that a town government would do.
There's two point seven million dollars in capital projects identified in the next two years. Um, only part of it is what we're talking about now, mostly in the schools, over a million dollars worth of capital projects. So Kate, if you want to spend that money, we'll, we'll spend it, I promise.
Well. The, because ARPA money has to be spent, uh, it's, and there's a dual purpose to spending. The ARPA money on some of these things, because one of the major categories of ARPA expenditures was for. You know, um, air hand, you know, HVAC, and most of our projects are HVAC. So, uh, and that, you know, will ensure, or hopefully ensure more clean air, so if we ever have another one of these. That we can actually use the buildings and feel assured that there'll be good air circulation and we're not going to kill one another by, you know.
Conversation, in the short conversation I've had with the schools, I, I strongly recommend that a conversation be had. About their capital projects, because they far exceed the projects that we're talking about here, and most of them would be. Along the lines of what you're talking about HVAC improvements. And other items that need to be included in, in this discussion as well. So this is just the town side. The school far outweighs the capital and the municipal side and it's not, not accounted for right now.
What, what, what is the expiration date on the ARPA funds?
It was three years, right?
Twenty five.
Yeah, it's about the same. We have to spend it by then, yes, twenty five.
Yeah, but funds fund, uh, phone systems too, or not?
With anything that a government. Service would, you know, that the government would spend their money on, so we cannot put it. Yes, um, in any kind of, you know, savings account, um, we can't put it in, um, O P A D. Anything like that, but we can spend it on any service that we would have spent it on anyway.
So there will be a roll up of all the, the current capital requests to the budget that goes to in December, January. And, and you'll see that there's far more projects than there is money. So this discussion would be. Really well had in January saying, okay, let's obligate all the funds we have currently to tackle this list. And then there'll be conversations about how we do the rest of it.
Do the, do the funds cover project managers and things? So I mean, I think the point, I guess, Jerry and Bill is, we feel you gotta open up the spigot. The money's there, the will is there, you guys have cleaned up your charter, which is great, you're meeting, you're focused. And, you know, let's get on with it, because we've identified all these projects and it's been going on for a long time, so. Open up the spigot.
Well, I think, I think that's coming out, so we're gonna, we've got this engineer or engineering firm. We're gonna identify or have them design all these projects, and then it's really a question of prioritizing. And we've kind of, he's, we've done that, of sorts, but I think we need to do that a little bit more.
Well, you have to run some things in parallel. When you say prioritizing, it tells me you're gonna go in series, like this project manager will do this and this. Maybe you need a second project manager, I mean.
They do things concurrently.
Let's get going, right? We ought to be able to manage that. These projects are not, I mean, I know, it's easy for me to say, but they don't look. Humongous, they're not like the public safety building, right? You put a rooftop unit on, you pay, you do certain things that are discreet projects that can be managed, so that's my advice.
And I do know that school has, you know, needs as well. But they've had a much bigger maintenance budget over the years than, uh, town side has, so I, I, you know. I would like to see us address some of the town things. Obviously, you know, there's already ARPA funds that have been dedicated to, um, the Wilkens. That's, that's moving along, um, but definitely this town hall, the roof on the DPW, the salt shed. Uh, we need to, we need to get ahead of those. My humble opinion.
Great, well, if we've got some support on the select board, then we'll make that happen.
All right, any other, uh. Last comments from board members or, uh, Jerry or Bill? Okay, great. Thank you, yeah, very much for coming and, um, for the, you know, the revision and. Also, you know, I just support what we've said.
We voted the charter.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we look forward to lots of good progress and we'll come back, uh, when we're looking at the overall budget in January and revisit this again, yeah. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, let's go back then to the police chief search, um. So we can start by looking at the contract for our interim police chief, Kenneth Fong. And that's on page, uh, thirty six, there's a motion on page thirty six.
I move to execute the temporary employment contract between the town of Carlisle and Kenneth Fong, serving as interim police chief.
Second.
Great, now is there, um, anything, Ryan, that you want to point out about this contract or?
Just some, some highlights, both, uh, Chief Fong and I have reviewed it, town council's reviewed it. The major highlights the board would be concerned with are, this extends to June one if necessary, but hopefully that is not necessary. Uh, June thirtieth, sorry.
Fiscal year.
No more than a thousand hours, which is.
That's his limit, right?
Something that can be accomplished. Um, there's thirty day protection for both Chief Fong and the town, in case disagreement wants to be dissolved. He's being paid at the same rate as Chief Fisher was, eighty six, sixty nine an hour. He is to work a minimum of twenty hours a week, no more than forty, and he's getting two days off. Uh, vacation time a month, which is a prorated version of what our former chief was. The equivalency and pay is based off their similar experience. Those are the contract highlights.
All right, all right, uh, so we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, uh, any questions or comments? Nathan, anything you want to ask about or?
Nope, it looks good.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well then, let's take a roll call vote on it, please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What do I?
Read I.
Snell, I.
Excellent, excellent, all right, that's been approved unanimously and, uh, Chief Fong, now you get paid. All right, great, let's, um, then, uh, let's review the search firm proposals. And, uh, Ryan, I just thought, want to say, I thought it was very helpful, um, your analysis and, uh. Really appreciate that and so that begins on page fifty three of our, um. Packet, and do you want to give us a sort of a brief summary there?
Uh, yes, I can summarize quickly.
Okay.
So the firms that, we sent this to four firms, this was a recommendation, um, from a polling I did of area managers. Most, most heavily relying on Bedford, who just went through the search themselves. Um, four responded in writing, the four that we sent to police reform insight group chose not to submit a proposal. Badge quest, public safety consultants and hand to hand consulting all did submit. The RFP had four mandatory requirements you approved at our last meeting. Uh, firms must have three years of experience, conducted five equivalent assessment centers. Uh, agree to comply with EEO and IPM AAC standards. Of the three submitting firms, only public safety consultants and badge quests met all four mandatory requirements per, uh, their submittals. On the technical proposals, we used five measures to, uh, to measure the proposals, experience, completed assessment centers. The experience of the staff, the comprehensive nature of the technical proposal and the references. Uh, one optional measure that you can exercise tonight is to interview the firms. So as in your packet, as and I'm putting up here, we did analyze these. Um, a couple of them, that you can imagine that these firms submit some canned proposals, so where I could infer, I did. Where I couldn't, I did not because of the nature of the RFP. So in terms of experience, public safety consultants rated as advantageous, badge quest did not answer. And, uh, hand to hand didn't meet the minimum, so I won't be reporting on them. Of conducting similar assessment centers, both public safety consults, consultants and badge quests rated highly advantageous. In terms of specific staff experience, they did submit resumes and we were impressed with the, the resumes that were submitted. But they did not identify how long they had done this, which the RFP had asked for, so neither one was rated there. In terms of their plans, I thought public safety consultants and badge quests put together very specific proposals that, um, identified measures that the board was looking for. And they did tailor it to Carlisle, so they rated highly advantageous. And then in terms of references, Aubrey and I called both, um, and received six. Highly favorable references from the names that were submitted, um, no negatives from either. So they both rated highly advantageous there, so based off the RFP's technical analysis of the proposals. Public safety consultants rated the highest, then we return to price proposals. Um, of the three, hand to hand was the lowest, but again, did not meet the minimum criteria. So of the two that did, public safety consultants was the lowest with a maximum, if you want to entertain six assessment candidates of fourteen to fifty. The reason for the increase in price is having to bring on additional assessors for six people. So you could save money by only requiring four or five candidates. Badge quest is at seventeen eight forty three. So the analysis of the proposal demonstrates that public safety consultants is the lowest and most responsive bidder. Uh, however, you can decide to, um, to analyze your own criteria and decide which firm is the best to include exercising your, your. Interview option. So the choices the board has tonight is to accept the public safety consultant's proposal. Uh, to exercise an option to interview and add another data point or deny all the bids and restart the RFP process.
Thank you.
I would like us not to do the last option.
Me too, please.
You'd like a what?
We don't like the last option.
All right, so let's hope, yeah, open for comments.
It's a great job, I, I think, um, the only thing I would say is based on the experience we had interviewing. Search firms to fill your position, and we interviewed, I think, first the lowest bidder and the chemistry just wasn't there. Um, so on paper, PSC looks clearly ahead, they wrote a great proposal and very thorough, but. You know, one of the guys comes out of badge quest, I think badge quest is a long time, they've been around a long time, right, so. My preference would be to have either interview both or at least the one firm, just to make sure. That we have the chemistry before we have the engagement.
Yep, other comments?
I would think, if we're gonna interview, I would suggest we interview both, because we don't want to then.
Right.
Say, oh, we're not really sure, now let's interview the next person, because then we'd lose more time.
No, I agree with that.
I agree, yeah.
I think that's a great assessment, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so, um, we're in agreement that we want to interview both firms, yeah, and, um.
I make time for it now, we need a special, probably a special meeting.
I'm just wondering, yeah, because what do you think the timeframe, uh, how much time would you give to interview a firm?
Fifteen to thirty minutes per firm.
Yeah, thirty, so an hour for, because we need some discussion too, so. David's already shaking. I know. Well, let's, the other question that may influence. We're having a whole separate, um, meeting for the, one of the, either or both of the dog issues.
I know, we have a twofer.
Yeah. But, okay, so we're in agreement, we want to interview them, we do, we will get to the, uh. Uh, after the TA report, we'll be looking at the, um, draft agenda for the twenty ninth, and we can also then. Look at what we put down for December thirteenth, but ideally it would be soon, yeah, um. So let's go back then and talk about the, um, selection of the screening committee. So, uh, as I send out to all of you, um. I am proposing, I have, I've, I am reopening the, um. Or extending the timeframe for people that might be interested in serving on the screening committee. And the reason for that is that, um, you know, our original deadline, uh. Was about two weeks ago, and then we had people come forward after that deadline. Um, that were very interested in serving, in addition to the four candidates that, um, submitted letters of interest. And met the deadline, but it seemed to me that, um, with the, with the community interest, uh, with that additional community interest. Rather than, um, not give those folks a chance to be considered, and also given that, that where we are in the hiring of the search firm. It seemed to me we should reopen it or extend it and allow, um, additional letters of interest to be submitted. And then consider those, uh, along with the four that we already have at the November twenty ninth meeting. And, um. So I hope that's acceptable to everybody, because, uh, because I went ahead and submitted a letter to the mosquito. Cause I wanted to get it into this week's issue, and next week I believe they're not publishing, so, because of the Thanksgiving week. So that means that'll go out in this week's issue and will give people the opportunity, uh, up through, uh, next Monday night. To submit a letter of interest, and then we could include that in the packet that goes out. Uh, for the November twenty ninth meeting, and again, the packet's gonna have to go out early also because of the Thanksgiving holiday, so. That was my thinking about the timing, and so one of the things I think we should ask ourselves is, given the level of interest. And also thinking about, um. The, the current committee we've set up, we have it now that there are, um. There's one representative from the police department, one from dispatch, um. One from the council on aging and then, uh, a member of the select board. And one person currently was the idea for a community representative. But in thinking about it, you know, those four that we have are all, um, town employees. Oh, well, no, not the select board members, sorry, but three of them are town. No, three of the five are, are town employees, and so. I thought it might be worth considering, um, having two, uh, community representatives. Just again, given that this is a position that is of great interest to the community as well as the people that work in the department.
Yeah, but then that gives you an even number.
It does.
Yeah, I would, I would say make it, make it three then.
I mean, we could, or, but also we could think about the fact that, um, we're gonna want that group to come back with it. If they're voting, you know, three to three around whether or not to, uh, propose a candidate. Is that somebody we're really gonna want to look at anyway?
I agree with that.
Yeah, so I think, um, but anyway, it's something for us to think about, we don't have to decide that tonight. I guess what we do need to decide tonight, though, is if we do want to consider, uh, having more. Uh, members that represent the community, I'd just like us to have that conversation, so we know when we look at those letters of interest. That we're thinking about picking one, two, or three of those, um, to serve on the screening committee. So comments, thoughts?
Did you want to vote the others now and then?
No, I think we should wait and do it all at once.
So really the discussion is.
Tonight is just.
One or two, uh.
Yeah, or do we want to consider, um, um, yeah, appointing more than one community rep? And if we're in agreement that we do, we don't have to even necessarily decide how many that would be.
We can see who we get.
Right, we can see what we get.
I think it should be open minded, I, I'm not, like you, I'm not troubled by an even number, I agree. If it comes to that, you don't have the right person, uh, the candidate.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, I'm not hung up on a number, and I, I believe just generally because. The police touch the lives of. And I would say the same if we were doing a search for a fire. and I would say the same if we were doing a search for a fire chief. These are areas that everybody experiences that function. And so citizen inputs really key. So I'm fine with more than one at large.
Other comments or?
I agree. I think we need, you know, we certainly afford to have two at large members.
Nathan, any comment?
No, my, my comment was just, I would just make it a seven member and have three.
And have three, okay.
You know, I'm not stuck on that, but, you know, I do agree. It's an incredibly important position. There's a lot of interests. We don't typically get that. Encouraging that interest is good, and I'm remembering, right, the fire chief selection was seven. I don't remember what the police chief was, though. Actually, I wasn't on the board then, so that's why I don't remember.
We did have more than five, I think, but anyway, yeah. Travis, you comfortable?
Yeah, I, I am comfortable. I, being on the committee or being on the police chief search committee, I think I'd like to have, and maybe now's not the right time, but I'd like to have a better understanding of what the select board is looking for that committee to do specifically. Is it to, you know, identify, decide on the criteria that they, that the committee wants for that chief and then, and then execute on that, that, and then select candidates based on those criteria? Is that?
Well, I think in this case, if you look at the proposals from either of the two search firms, they'll, they, they will be, both of them have, you know, what do they call it, interviewing and community input in sort of understanding what, and it'll include input from the select board about understanding what are the particular characteristics for our community? You know, there's a whole bunch of basic stuff that they're going to make sure the candidate is qualified to do. And I also, I think it's also important for us to remember that this is going to be a little different than the screening committee for the town administrator in that I think the screening committee will play, because, because that whole assessment element is really outside the screening committee's qualifications to do. That gets done by the search firm. So one of my thoughts about having the, the search firm come and talk, have us interview them is we can specifically ask, how do you see the screening committee interacting with the way you do the search? And so that then we can give that screening committee sort of the appropriate guidance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're going to wait till you have more information from the
Yeah, from the search firm, and yeah, right.
Decide what the screening committee is going to do. The reason I ask is in part because people who've approached me about the screening committee want a better understanding of what that's going to entail, you know? And obviously specifics like, well, how often is it going to meet? And I, I don't have those answers, and I don't think we could even provide those at this point. But I, I think some general idea of what the role of that committee is is helpful.
Typically, and it doesn't have to be this way, but the screening committee feeds a representation of the community into the screening assessment. And then the assessment produces results from that, that group. And those results go to the select board for a choice. The screening committee does all the work ahead of time. The assessment center assesses their ability to be a chief because that's a very technical job that I wouldn't even feel qualified to say who would be the best fit, and then then you get the output.
I guess I view it a little different, but I haven't done a police search, but I've done the other searches, kind of like TA, who run that committee. It's a two-part. It's the front end so that the search firm gets a, they're going to do a bunch of things, and some of them, I talked about a townwide survey. I mean, there's lots of, we can decide the range of inputs we want to provide them. But I think clearly the search committee, because it's a smaller group and it's going to be focused on it, should provide the key, not the firm, but actually the individual, the principal of the firm who's going to be heading the search should get a real clear flavor of those criteria and characteristics and sort of rank or rating. Then I think, and I don't know this, I'll, we'll ask, but the search firm should present a palette of resumes, even if they have no name. These are the quality. And again, am I on the right track? Which of these do you really want? Do they want to go through the, you know, the assessment and all that stuff, I think? But again, I haven't done a police search, but other searches would work that way. Then at the end, after all that's done, it's up to us to interview finalists.
Well, let's, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to try to reach out to either of the two firms and get a more definite
They'll be here in two weeks.
Description from them. Well, I'm just thinking about people that might be interested. I do think we have a sense of the time commitment, which it is three to five meetings, and it's just going to be longer, clearly because we're not going to start the process more likely until, we won't post it until the firm does that initial, you know, gathering of information from various people, and then it gets posted, which they said recommend a thirty-day posting. So I think more likely the, the members that participate in the screening should be thinking their participation is probably going to run more like through February rather than initially when we said, you know, through January, maybe even into early March. I don't know. But it would be a fairly limited set of meetings. And when they meet would be determined by the screening committee members themselves. Right. So, yeah, I think people just have to, you know, be prepared to be guided by the search firm and learn as they get into it what, what their specific role is and that. But we can, as a select board.
I think some of these questions also will be answered when we're doing our initial interview. Because I'm looking at this, four candidates, five candidates, six candidates. I don't know how many, I think that's going to kind of come out of that conversation as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Based on the conversation we've had, though, I think, given, and David, your description of how this would move forward, I would think that having seven would just be better because it might be more representative if you're really looking for screening of, then having, you know,
I mean, I agree, and I agree with, I agree with what Nathan said. You know, kind of the more than, usually we're begging people to serve and people are asking to serve.
Right.
Sure. And then if somebody can't make it, you still have, you'll have others.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, good. Yeah, so we're, so we'll, so then, I guess, right, we need to figure out when we do the interviews with the search firm. Why don't we, can we take that up and we look at the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, which follows the town administrator's report. But first, let's have the conversation about the dog, the two dog concerns. So one is the, the dog that we declared a dangerous dog at the dog hearing we conducted about a year ago, maybe a little more than that. That dog was involved in an incident, as you may all remember, that a workman did not call ahead and went into the backyard that was not locked, but has a lock on it. And the dog attacked the worker, and he ended up being hospitalized. And then the second is a new complaint that about noise from dogs on Nathan Lane, that is a new dog and a new complaint. So I'm going to ask David, though, who did some, who did a sit-down with the owners of the dangerous dog over on South Street, to report back on that.
Okay, so just to refresh people's memory, this dog had, had, I think, four separate incidents over the course of some months. They were all different, but they all involved this dog exhibiting aggressive behavior, even biting people. And the, we, we were presented with kind of a limited range of choices of actions. And short of really draconian things like euthanizing or banning the dog from the state, it was clear that the dog needed to be confined at home and only, I don't know, if allowed outside at all on a muzzle leash situation. There was talk of creating a, we had a discussion at the select board about creating, it's not a kennel, but like even more confining. Pen, right, a pen. I was one of the people who said, I think that's unfair to the dog because that's no kind of life. So the owners, we gave them the prescription, which was defense and signage and make sure the dog didn't get out. And I have to say, the dog did not get out. The dog was in the confined area, but a workman, and they have workmen coming in, and they say, you know, that they warned the workmen repeatedly, blah, blah, blah. But workmen have maybe not the same staff, who knows? But anyway, the, I think it was a youngish worker came in, didn't, apparently didn't knock, didn't tell them, didn't follow that protocol, and got bit and went to the hospital, so that created, you know, a set of things. So I went over to the property. I interviewed the, I toured it. I interviewed the owners. I petted the dogs, you know, when they were there, the dog is very friendly, I have to say. But I think we didn't plan every contingency. So we did not actually say, thou, thou shalt lock the gates. And they didn't, but locking would have prevented even unanticipated entry. And they now have locked the gates, so the gates are locked. I further learned that the dog is crated when they're not home. So the dog is actually in the house in a crate. Dog seemed perfectly happy in the crate. I saw him in the crate for a while. And only when they're there, they get him, allow him to arrange the property. And in fact, they were there when this happened, but the guy, at least the owner, one owner told me, he heard the lawnmower and immediately knew, like he ran out, but he wasn't fast enough. So they've added new signage, they've added new locks, they've increased the security. You know, they, they did say that they have looked into rehoming the dog, but because the dog's been designated a dangerous dog, they would present an insurance problem for anybody who would take the dog. So, and they love the dog, and the dog seems very happy. So I, I don't really, I don't see a violation. They voluntarily complied with an additional common sense restriction. Full disclosure, we share a dog trainer. I mean, my dogs went to the same trainer as they did. And I asked them whether, you know, could you do, can that trainer do more socialization? And they said, well, he says, and I know the guy, it's in the breed. Like, there's not, there's only so much he can do. So I believe that they are genuinely trying to make sure that it's careful and they're willing to comply with any recommendations. And, you know, we don't have too many more options. The dog is confined and they don't take the dog out. So, you know, that's, in fact, that was one question I asked. Because one of the training techniques is to socialize, right? You bring the dog to dog park, or even laws, can't do it, you know, they're not allowed. So, so I, I, you know, I believe that they're complying, and I think, I think that's enough about that. I think we, as a board, and you and I talked about this plenty, should entertain discussing with concerned citizens about just general, maybe not specific, but general anxiety about dangerous dogs in the, you know, we are a community, we love our dogs, and some are going to be dangerous, or bark or whatever. And I think we should maybe have a more general forum or time when citizens can talk about that. But I don't think targeting, my advice, targeting this is, there's not, it's unfortunate what happened, but I think they're taking correct steps, in my opinion.
Now, we, we'd asked Jenny Merrill, you know, counsel for, for their take on this. Do you want to quickly summarize that?
Well, the question, I think the question that's relevant is whether, what, what drives the need for a hearing? And her general takeaway, and she cites a bunch of stuff here, is if you get a complaint from a citizen, and Jean's reporting is not a complaint, that's just reporting, then it's probably a good idea to have a hearing. If there's not a complaint, then it's kind of at our discretion. So in this first case, she, she doesn't recommend or not recommend having a hearing, but we're under no obligation, thank you, to hold a hearing. On the barky one, did somebody complain? I can't remember.
Yeah, a woman wrote an email about that.
So I think on the barky one, we probably should hold a hearing, is my advice.
You know, I do, and I, I thought I read too that Jenny said one option was that the, we, we, it would still be called a hearing, I guess. It'd have to be a call to hearing, but that we could add to our original order, just making it part of the, the
Requirement, yeah.
The requirements that the gates be locked, because we didn't have that in our
Yes, I didn't ask her whether that by itself would require a hearing. My guess is we could simply have an email correspondence where they acknowledge that they are locking. I don't think we need to make a big deal of it, I, in my opinion.
What is a complaint, just so I know, is that you file with the police department? Is it a formal, what constitutes that?
An email to me constitutes a complaint from a resident that had an issue with the dog.
So, but is that an email from somebody who was bitten by the dog or?
I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't quite hear you, Nathan.
Is that, is that a, is that, is that a complaint for somebody who was directly bitten by the dog or harassed by the dog or?
Well, this, this second dog is a complaint about noise. The first one that we're discussing, no, there was no formal complaint filed by anybody. What happened was because the worker was bitten and went to the hospital, by law, they have to notify the dog officer in town. So Jean.
Yeah, I just want to be, I just, my, my question wasn't that. My question was what constitutes a complaint? The answer was somebody that, what you said was somebody writes to you.
Or anyone else, yeah.
So my, my question is, that person who writes to you or, or comes to us and complains, do they have to have been directly bitten or harassed by the dog? Because we have had, we have had a complaint by a town resident.
Well, here's my understanding that a community member that is worried about a dog that lives in the town but has had no direct experience with that dog, they, they cannot file a complaint. But someone who has had a direct experience with a dog can file a, can file a complaint.
There's case law she cites. It's unclear that if someone didn't suffer harm, and harm could be physical harm or could be just annoyance, like noise keeping you up, what kind of legal standing they would have, like a friend of the court, wow, I heard there was a dog across town and I'm filing it. I'm like, that wouldn't be very good. But could someone come and say, I'm just scared, you know? I live down the street and I'm scared, probably. Do we have that? We don't have that. We don't have any of those things. We have, I think we have a complaint of someone who says this dog or dogs are noisy. I mean, I don't know, I forget the details. That's legitimate.
We did have somebody come before us and worried about this dog on South Street.
No one has, well.
That's not true. In our last board of select meeting, we had somebody speak up.
The person come forward.
Nowhere close to this dog expressed general anxiety. That's why I recommend that we should have some kind, and again, I, we haven't checked this fully with counsel, but I recommend that we do acknowledge, and I think you brought this up last time, Nathan, general anxiety about, we're having, you know, increased for whatever reason, maybe because people got dogs in the pandemic and they don't know how to handle dogs. But there seem to be more complaints about dogs, about dogs maybe left at home and barking, or dogs that get loose or whatever. And we should probably have some kind of meeting with citizens and get, you know, just to hear them out and think about whether we need to change any policies. We have a no leash law, which I personally enjoy quite a bit, but is that a good policy anymore? I don't know, you know? So I think we should generally acknowledge that. I would personally not want to formalize people's anxieties by aiming those anxieties at specific dog owners who are otherwise complying with the law. That's my opinion.
Nathan, do you want to offer any comments on that?
On the, on the first dog in general, or?
Or just the, yeah, the first dog in general, and how we're proposing what our situation is.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm worried about the situation, you know? If, if we think back to, you know, when we had the public hearing, we were very, very clear, if there was any more biting, that there was going to be another hearing and further action. You know, we haven't heard from Jean. And, you know, I, I worry that, you know, if we were to just say, ah, this is, you know, this is an isolated incident, now they have the locks and it's okay, and we just keep letting this go on, I think that we're opening ourselves up to some liability for not taking action on an issue. So I'm not sure that I completely agree that we should not be holding a public hearing and seeing if there are additional things that we should be doing, you know? It would be good to hear from the person who was bitten, and it would be good to hear from Jean, because getting the information out of exactly what happened in the last public hearing was a process we had to go through.
Other comments?
Well, Travis unfortunately wasn't there. Fortunately for him, anyway. That last hearing that we had with them was very difficult, on all kinds of different levels. I remember Luke getting up and leaving and saying, you know, this, that he really felt strongly we had made the wrong decision altogether.
That's not why he left.
Well.
He was kicked out.
Yeah.
But he was upset because he felt we were going to make the wrong decision and that this dog was going to bite somebody again and that we were going to be in trouble, is what I recall.
No, what happened was he and the, the male owner of the dog got into a shouting match.
Well, they did.
Over, over the fact of what, over the fact of what Kate just said. So Kate, Kate's right, and that was the basic issue.
That was the basic issue. And so I would hesitate to brush this off, this next, this incident off. And, you know, and I, you know, I know Vanessa lives across town and she has generalized anxieties, and normally I would say, yeah, you can't, you know, I would agree with you. But in this case, because we did have a hearing, because it went so badly, because there was so much acrimony and bellicosity, I would say even, huh? That, I don't think we can just brush this off.
You know, I think it's okay to have a hearing, I'm not, but I'm a practical person. So if we hold a hearing, I think we need a lot of work with counsel, because the range of remedies are very limited.
Right, yeah.
And so if you, you know, I'm like the trial lawyer, right? Don't ask a question you don't already know the answer to. If we go in there, oh, this is terrible, we got to amp it up to DEFCON four, we're looking at euthanasia, probably. I mean, I just want to be clear that the range gets really limited beyond what we've done. And so we ought to get, before we just pontificate about this stuff, we ought to really get versed in what, what are our options? We hold a hearing, people yell and scream, or hopefully don't yell and scream, but if we're going to end up at the same place, which is okay, please lock and make bigger signs or whatever, we, we don't need the emotion of a hearing to get that accomplished. I'm telling you.
Maybe it's muscling the dog if he's outside unattended.
He is, but he's not outside.
Clearly he was, yes, no, he was outside.
Muscling when he's in his yard.
When he's, if he's going to be unattended, which he was.
Well, maybe just say he can't be unattended, that's okay, but we should explore it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think just, just a lock is.
Yeah, fair enough, okay, fair enough. But, I mean, I'm a dog owner, you got, the dog has to have a life, otherwise we got to say, okay.
Yeah.
But that's the owner's decision, not our decision.
Yeah, so the, what's before us then is the question about whether we're going to hold a hearing on this first dog we've been describing. And what I'm hearing is that at least two of the board members are, would definitely like us to do that, so.
I don't know that I.
Well, think we should do that, right? Think we should do that.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't want to do it. Travis, do you want to offer an opinion in this? I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I mean, I'll offer my opinion too, but.
Sure, what's your opinion?
Okay. No, that's fine, I, I just don't want to preempt you. I, so only, the one new comment I have to make is that, having talked with Jenny about this in the previous, you know, with the previous hearings that we had to hold for different dogs, and also from what she wrote back and forth to me and Ryan, I guess, and David on this, when we were trying to figure out what our options were. The, they have, the dog owners have complied with our, the remedies that we outlined in our, in the, that came out as a result of that first dog hearing. They are in compliance with those remedies. And it's the, so we don't have much standing in terms of being able to say, well, you violated the order, so therefore we can go to these higher level remedies that could be more, you know, much more significant. Having said that, however, I think that, given the situation with this particular dog and his history in town, I think it would be good to have a hearing as a way to discuss with the owners, what is it that they are willing to do? What do we think they should be doing to just go even further, as far as possible, to make sure that there's no repeat of anyone being hurt by this dog again? So I don't, so that, that's my feeling about this.
Could we get a copy of what was written so that we would have?
What was written?
The email back and forth with Jenny.
Yeah, that would be helpful to, you know, because we're talking, you guys have got information we don't have.
There's not much there that pertains to what Barney's saying, but yes.
But yeah, so as long as we, as long as we go into the hearing understanding that we are not, my read is we are not in a position, we won't be able to say, well, you have failed to comply with the orders we issued the first time around.
But is that saying that we don't have a new, new dog nuisance hearing? I mean, a dog nuisance, so, yes, so we tried to be reasonable in what we prescribed because we were thinking about the dog. And so we tried to be reasonable in that, and so we tried safeguards, but we were clear that if anything continued to happen, they were going to come back. Are you saying that Jenny has said that because they're following what we said, because he's bitten another dog, doesn't mean we still have an issue that we can try to address with additional controls?
We can try to address with the owners and come up with some additional controls, but according to her, we cannot force them.
Well.
We can't draw on either euthanizing or removing them from the state as an additional remedy that we want to add to the order. If we did, they could very easily contest that, because they are in compliance with the order we gave, in all respects.
In her, I just sent you guys the thing, what she wrote. But she said, assuming the board has received some inquiry in writing, which actually we have not received an inquiry in writing. The best course of action is likely to hold a hearing, find no violation of the existing order, and amend the existing order to require locks on the gates. So that's fine, we can do that. We can do that, but I suggest if that's all we're going to do, we don't need a hearing. We can just do that through an email, and they will, I'm sure, acknowledge that they're doing it. We can go back and re-inspect, which, we can do all those things. I'm just saying, a hearing raises the temp, everybody's temperature. I don't think raising everybody's temperature is the best outcome in this case.
Could we also get a copy of the order? Because I don't think I ever saw the final order.
I'm sure we can get a complete package.
I would love to see how it was actually written.
So I suggest it's after 10:00. We're not going to hold the hearing next week, so why don't we get together our facts? We'll put a package together.
Please, please share that, whatever you find with us, so that we're not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's get counsel, we'll reengage counsel with these new facts and opinions and.
Travis, we never had a chest to weigh in.
He's very smart.
No, I, I wasn't here at the last hearing, and I don't have that information, and I didn't live it the way you all have lived it. So I wanted to go, my first thing would be to go back and read what happened and understand that before just making a decision on this. And, and I don't think that's a, well, I think that that's the right approach. So I'd like to do that, and then, you know, we can revisit this.
Be comfortable with that, Nathan?
What's that?
Be comfortable with us. Oh, sorry. We'll pull, we'll pull out the final order so we can all review that again. We will provide the information from counsel about their opinion about what, what can be done at a hearing, and then we can decide how we want to move forward.
Could you also put the minutes in there from the hearing, please?
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah. And then the, okay, but let's, so that's the first dog, the one that we've already had a hearing on. Now there is a new complaint that came in from Phyllis Rothschild on October 4th, and she sent it to me and copied her, whoever, her partner, I'm assuming, that lives in the house with her husband, oh yeah, it is her husband, she refers to him. And they're at 347 Elizabeth Ridge Road, and they are having trouble with nearby dogs that are barking endlessly and periodically getting loose. And they've identified the two dogs, mixed breed border collies that belong to residents at 124 Nathan Lane. So she sent me this October 4th. I forwarded it to Jean and Ryan and David, and wrote back to her and said we would, you know, I needed to check in with the appropriate people and get back to her.
Did you send that to us, Barney?
I did not. No.
Why?
Because we were, because I thought we, I should, this is the way I've often done this, until we had Jean Delano involved, it seemed to me, it was not something that would, I, I didn't think of sending it to the full select board unless we knew we were going to have a hearing on it. And so.
I guess, I guess, or a discussion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, what?
I guess, or a discussion at the select board.
Right, right. And so when Ryan and I and David talked about it, we agreed that we needed to ask her, was, did she want us to consider this a formal complaint, because then we could, we would hold a hearing? And I wrote that in, on October 17th, back to her, and then I never heard back. So, but, but according to our town council, our council, her email to me is, would qualify as a complaint. So I'm thinking we should hold a hearing if she still wants to. And that we should decide if we want to try to schedule something in December, or do we want to wait till we discuss the first dog at our next select board meeting? And then we could, if we're going to do hearings for both of them, we have them on the same night?
Oh, well, that'd be fun.
Yeah. But just as a separate.
And do we know, do we know that, like, the dog barking, like, exceeds the noise allowance and things like that?
Well, we, you know, we don't have a noise ordinance around dogs.
We do for the continuous barking.
Yeah, we do. I thought when we had that other one, we realized the only, the only noise ordinance we have is around roosters, you know, chickens.
No, there's dog continuous barking.
Okay, well, anyway, so both Jean Delano and Matt Zvatek had been involved. They contacted the dog owners. And, and they said there'd been no improvement. And so I wrote back to her and said, the next step is to file a formal complaint with us, you know, do you want to have us hold a hearing? And she didn't respond, so.
I think you just have to either ask her again, or if she doesn't want to hold a hearing.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so the next step, I guess, would maybe Jean Delano should do this, right? Because he's already been in touch.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, and then, and then I think we should follow the.
Oh, go ahead, Travis, do you want to?
Well, no, I was just thinking that part of this is that, that how these things come in and how they're disseminated. And I'm wondering, it just seems most things with the town go through a different channel rather than just directly to one person on the select board. Maybe I'm wrong on that. Maybe we as a board should look at that policy and just think about, you know, should that, should complaints go to administrator or to some other appropriate person? Just as a matter of changing procedure, so that we have a streamlined.
Well, yeah, the thing is, I'm sure you have it too, where people approach you because they know you're on the select board, right?
Yeah, but you would refer to them to the proper channel. I mean, people approach me about the zoning board of appeals, even though I'm not on it, and ask questions. And I say, here, this is who, this is the, the proper channel, the proper.
Right. Yeah, we, we can certainly have that conversation.
Yeah, I think in general.
Trying to put everything through Ryan and.
Obviously you did the right thing by putting it through Ryan, and Ryan is, I think, is the clearinghouse, and he's the one that decides, would decide that, you know, to bring, send it back to the whole select board, or that he could take care of it himself, or that there's somebody else like Jean would take care of it, you know? And if he can't take care of it, Jean might come back. But I think it's, just goes to Ryan, and Ryan.
I just think it's worthwhile having some point a review of that policy.
We should do, we should do, but let's not do it.
Sure, not tonight, not tonight.
So let's, more to come, then, more to come.
So let's, we do need to take a few minutes to hear from Ryan with his report, and I know there are a couple of, I think there are a couple of action items in there.
Are you familiar with the fastest three minutes of football?
Channel it, channel it.
Okay.
Okay, hang on. The transition point I'm making is I no longer feel like I'm transitioning, I feel like I'm here in parallel. But there's still a lot that I need to do in order to learn about the community, so I'm not going to report transition anymore, but I'm still, still working on all the things I said, to include compiling a six-month report for you with some recommendations, findings, and, and other trends. Yes. Bunch of policy reviews. Chief Fong, I watched Chief Fong get sworn in. He is now effectively our chief and doing a great job in communicating with me daily. I also consulted, and this requires feedback from you, with the police department about the pending officer hires, which have been discussed at a couple of meetings now. One of them is a vacated position, a retirement, and the other one was authorized on the FY23 budget and never hired. So according to the department leadership and with recommendation from interim Chief Fong, they're requesting at least a month, if not two, before hiring these positions. And that does include notifying the pending candidates that this delay is happening. The reason for the delay is there is no immediate need to hire, and the department leadership would like to do an analysis of staffing levels and bring that, bring that to the board. The idea that there would likely be a recommendation to do one of the hiring, and then maybe two if necessary. But as the board entertained this, and it was publicly discussed, I would like to make sure that the board is on, board is on board with this before coming back to you in a month or two. So I'll pause.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, well, Barney and I met with Chief Fong yesterday.
Yesterday?
Monday, yeah. That was yesterday, and you did too.
I did individually, yeah.
And we discussed, kind of talked about that with him.
Kate and I went together, Kate is the liaison to the police department and me is the chair of the select board.
He, you know, I thought he did a really great presentation around this issue, and I think this is the right recommendation, for all kinds of reasons. So to make sure that the police leadership team is all involved in the right way. So, yeah, I think that's a good way to go. My opinion.
Well, I, I think it'd be good to, I heard a slightly different opinion from Chief Fong Fong in the conversation, because thinking it would be good to hire one of the two sooner rather than later, and get them in before the holidays. So it might be worth discussing timing and seeing, maybe I misheard what he was, what he was sharing with us.
I, he said one of them thought he'd get hired part-time, but still, this is a little different than a full-time position. So, and I think they're talking about the full-time positions and not part-timers at this point.
Regardless of which a candidate is, you're saying, right?
Yeah. But he wanted to bring one of the two candidates in now and as, potentially as part-time, but with the idea that they might be then...
The message to the two candidates is that we are putting off the full-time hiring.
Okay.
I think that's the difference. I don't, did I?
Unless he changed his opinion in the last day, then that, that is what I understand for Chief Fong, of course. I'll talk to him about it tomorrow.
Okay. Because he did say something about bringing one in, you're right, part-time. But I, I understood that was like a different deal. Because that's temporary, it's provisional, it was not a full-time, you know, so...
Yeah, he said he wanted to fill the funded position but start his part-time.
Yes, that's what I would do, yeah.
I will clarify that, and if necessary, bring it back to the next meeting.
So just so, so I'm sorry, but just so I understand, so it's, there's, there's a new position, full-time, and an existing position, full-time, that are both vacant, that we're going to be filled, right? And I thought, and so, and so the proposal, Ryan, that you were just saying is that we not hire those two people and let the new, the new chief do that, and, and the staff within the police were, were fine with that. Is that right?
That is what I understood. What was presented tonight, I've never heard.
And then, and so then, then there's another one. So what, what came up tonight is taking one of those people and hiring them part-time in one of those positions. Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, well, I thought he was going to talk to Ryan about that.
He didn't.
Yeah. So I'd be, I'd be personally worried about that because it's kind of like starting a process. I think we either wait. So anyway, I think, Ryan, you know, you can find out more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this says, we not hire any new officers, in, in your report, Ryan, it says, we not hire any new officers for at least a month. And, and so we are not going to have a new police chief on in a month, or two months, or probably not three months, right? So the question is whether we hire somebody new under the interim police chief, or we say we're going to wait until we have that permanent police chief. And I believe, are you thinking that you and, you're saying you and Chief Fong had agreed that you just wait on filling one of those positions, but that might come eventually under Chief Fong?
It, it wasn't just Chief Fong. It was unanimous opinion of the department leadership that they needed him on to evaluate this. Whether a part-time officer was discussed or not is news to me.
I agree.
I agree with, I, I agree with Ryan's, Ryan's proposal, and a change of bringing in somebody part-time, I think we'd need to talk again. That makes me worried.
Yeah, I agree with that. Regardless of what Fong said, I think that makes sense.
Well, yeah, I would, I would love to have Chief Fong and Ryan both on the same, you know, being, being very clear that that's what they both are saying. Yeah, right, right.
Maybe us.
I may misunderstood, right.
Certainly, certainly for the permanent, two permanent full-time positions, I'm on board with the, at least waiting a month.
I'm still getting used to the individual meetings with employees, so I will...
Yeah, yeah.
Discuss that with people.
But in any case, it's, it's good that we've waited and that we're having the new leadership involved in, in going forward.
Aubrey started this week. That's the next point. We dragged her immediately to Ferns, so she is fully Carlisle now. Speaking of new, now she's not new anymore. She's been here a full week. Julie Merciers accepted the appointment, and will start on December 5th as the new town planner, as was reported in the mosquito. And...
Well, they made a correction, which is good in the last issue.
Good, because I got very upset when I...
So it's not a planning administrator, but it's a new position called the town planner.
She's a real planner. It's the first one.
Sorry?
First one.
Yes, the first one we've ever had in town.
So we had a very successful all-chairs meeting with all of the land use boards and committees. More than 30 people were there. That was a long meeting, but lots of good information was shared, and definitely first steps towards greater land use coordination, which is in everyone's best interest to include. Everybody stated their, their best interests. Good with the finance committee and just continuing to work on policies. I will be, and Aubrey, actually, are, are we both working on our MCPPO certifications, which is procurement. She'll be fully accredited by the end of next month, and I will be fully resorted by the end of next month. So you'll have two certified procurement officers. Some quick action items. In Article 11 of the annual town meeting, the body approved a fire assistance easement for Still Meadow that has been signed by those who needed through council, and it's looking for your approval and signature in order to complete that process. I do not have the document here, but I will get it to for signing, but it does need to be approved.
So we need to have a motion to approve this?
I would, just to be thorough.
Okay.
I, I move to accept the fire assistance easement for Still Meadow.
Yeah, Still Meadow Development.
Still Meadow Development, as approved at last year's annual town meeting.
Second.
Is this the type of thing that the planning board makes a recommendation on?
They did at town meeting.
It was approved at town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Planning board brought it to town meeting.
I guess, and it's gone to council, and they want us to sign off on the easement to complete the process.
I'm surprised.
So we probably really don't have to vote on it. I mean, I think it's already a done deal. This is a concluding the whole, yeah, the legal filing of it.
That seems like town, town, town meeting ranks us.
So why don't we, I draw the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll sign it.
All right. Use of the town green by the Be Yourself, William Be Yourself Challenge. So the group responsible for William's Be Yourself Challenge is a local nonprofit. They're requesting use of the town green on December 20th. This is to host their annual Bright in the Night event, which places green luminary kits at the home to honor William Shaw, a Carla resident who passed away three and a half years ago at the age of nine, which is very sad and worth honoring. This also offers cha, residents a chance to place kits on the town green for any level when they've lost. I'm sure this is, this is new to me, but not to you, making the town center a place of remembrance. So they said they would clean the green, which is, which is obvious, and the FRS was notified, so looking to approve this use.
It's a beautiful, that I move that we approve the use of the town green for William Be Yourself Challenge.
On December 20th, 2022.
20th, 2022. Thank you.
Second.
David, seconded. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Barney, if you'll...
They'll be in touch with, they'll be in touch with the police department, right?
Yep. If you want to hold up the proclamation, so Council on Aging and Human Services requests the board, support this proclamation to support the presentation of the Boston Post Kane to Santo Calara. This already happened. Barney and Kate were there, myself and Aubrey, and the entire town at Ferns, plus all the town's veterans, to honor the 98-year-old who plays jazz and served in the Navy during World War II. This would be to prove the proclamation that went with that very nice event. Great way to kick off Veterans Day weekend.
So I move that we support the proclamation.
Second.
And with, with the thanks and appreciation of Mr. Santos's service as well, as for his age.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. All those, I mean, Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
It's getting late.
Excellent.
All right, some, I know it's late, but I would like to recognize some staff. So the, the town clerk staff for handling the federal state and federal state election that just occurred. They were there until 4:00 AM on Wednesday, and then came in on time on Thursday to complete the process, and then again on Saturday because of the holiday on Friday. So my sincere thanks to their staff, the volunteers who helped that, that process. We were not in the newspaper, which is the sign of a great election in, in the local sense. Just talked about the Boston Post Kane presentation. There was more than 20 veterans at this event from Carlisle. Ferns was packed. It was really nice. It was a great way for Aubrey to meet basically the entire town. I debated with a lot of the veterans there about the best military branch, and those who weren't in the Army lost. But the COAHS provided me with an opportunity to thank Carla Indians who served, and it was a great event. So I'd like to thank Joan and her staff. Jen and Sue Thomas, Jen from our board deserves a great deal of credit for working on our Green Communities reporting and getting that initial report in, which makes us eligible for Green Communities grants, which we'll be working on. It sounds simple, but it was very difficult, and they deserve credit for putting everything aside and making that happen and meeting the deadline. Holly, during the all-chairs meeting that I mentioned, set everything up. And then I had to leave in a hurry to do something, and she took care of everything, which I felt bad about, but she really stepped up to make that event good, but also highlighted the brick building and all the work she's done there as a venue for meetings like that. So she deserves credit, not only for the day, but for all the work she's put into that building. And then Alan, our beloved custodian, who today was handing boxes through me to Brian and others as we cleaned out the attic, or at least looked at the records up there. Hadn't quite cleaned it up yet. He brought all the boxes down. He also helped prepare for the election and helped ready the Clark Room for the floor repairs that are happening now. He also assisted me in finding some vendors for the IT department. Simply put, Alan runs the town hall, and I'm learning that, and he does everything, and he's awesome.
I was going to say, Bill Rissel would also be very, and Stephen Vastick are probably also thrilled to death that those boxes got out of the attic, because they had to step around them to work on the equipment up there. Not to mention the fact that Chief Saros should be happy that we have less of a fire hazard up there now.
Three, three original copies of the fire system plan.
You kidding? Great.
We don't, we don't tell the fire chief that. Okay. The, the last part of my report, besides letting you know that I already have that I won't be here Thursday and Friday for, for some training, is the agenda. I don't know if you want to go over that.
Yeah, just very quickly. I guess that's...
I think the question is, can we make room for an hour of...
Yeah, here it is.
I think really...
Page 131. Yeah.
I think we should just work that one out.
Yeah, but we do know that the Public Safety Facilities Task Force wants to go in, wants to have their meeting in December, so they can finish up some things.
Okay, so there's a slot.
So that will give us, yeah. So we'll work with this tomorrow. If anybody has any...
No, no hearing. There's not enough time in the day. Talking about having the two police search firms.
Oh, the, sorry, the police search firms. Yes, 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 yes.
I think we can do that.
Yeah, yeah, you got enough. You can put them in that public safety. It's, it's appropriate to put it in the Public Safety Facilities Task Force slot.
Okay. All right. So, but if any select board members have a question or comment or additions they want us to, you know, think about for this meeting or future meetings, please, just send those to Ryan.
I just want to remind everybody, I will not be there at the 29th meeting.
So is that, well, is that a reason to, I hate to delay. We could have the search firms separately. I mean, we could have one another.
How do you feel about that, Nathan?
I, I trust you guys to pick the right one. I don't want to hold up the process. I can't call in. I will be out of the country.
Okay. And then we do have an appointment to make here for the Recreation Commission. That's page 132.
Okay, appointments. I move to appoint Sarah Wengert at 65 Pagebook Road to serve on the Carlisle Recreation Commission for a term that will expire on June 30th, 2023.
Second.
And this was recommended by the Recreation Commission, and her letter of interest is included.
Yeah. And did Amy Smack leave? Because it was the end of her term, or she's moving?
Well, it looks like she resigned.
She resigned, okay.
She's got a lot.
Okay. Well, then, and...
That's why I think it's only till June 2023.
She's just filling, okay.
She's filling up the end of her term.
So, but we should then have, we should have a recom, a resignation as well.
Letter of resignation remaining.
That we then could accept with much thanks and gratitude for her service. But I'd be happy to, anyway.
I'm, I'm a liaison.
Okay.
Can we appoint an hour, do we...
No, we can appoint Sarah. Yeah. So you moved it, and did somebody second it? Okay. So let's have a roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
All right, excellent. If we can bear to stay for three more minutes, unless people have major changes, we, we didn't approve these minutes the last time, so it would be good to do them tonight.
I thought they were fine. I read them. So I move that we approve the minutes of October 11th, 2022.
Second.
As presented.
All right. Is that a second?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Any, any comments, discussion? Okay, great. Roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
All right, these minutes have been approved, and I think there's just the one set. Am I correct?
Yeah, there was only one set.
Okay.
And that's, but that was a couple of meetings ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, October, so we're catching up.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's it then, unless people have any questions about the warrant articles.
No. Well, there's nothing. Next, when they start dribbling in, then we'll have questions about them.
I'm sure other ones.
No, I meant these.
Oh, those warrants, not the warrant articles, the warrants, the payment warrants.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Well, then I think we're fine. All righty.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Sorry. Reed, aye, sorry.
Snell, aye.
And so be it. The meeting is adjourned.